Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the April 16th Select Board Meeting. You're being recorded and you're broadcast live, so everybody smile, okay?
I don't smile.
You're on TV, Mrs. Pascoe.
I am.
Anybody that can, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For those who don't know us, I'm John Martin, Francine Tishman, and Jim Labrie, Matt Rowland, and Reenie Groden will join us later.
Again, the left side wins.
What was that?
Again, the left side wins.
We're top-heavy. So, we have no appointments, no hearings, but we have a Boston Post cane award to Genevieve Pascoe. I'll try to speak louder. Mrs. Pascoe is right here. I get the privilege of reading this, and I hate to tell you this, but it has your age in here, so... Everybody's gonna hear it out there, so... I didn't write it. So, Boston Post cane award presented to the oldest living citizen in Southampton, Mass, Genevieve Skypack-Pascoe. The citizens of the town of Southampton are delighted to present the Boston Post cane award to Genevieve Pascoe, 47 Pequot Road, Southampton, who is currently recognized as the most senior citizen resident at 99 years of age. Genevieve was born on January 3rd, 1920, at Hoyoke Hospital in Hoyoke, Mass. Her parents were Stanley and Sophia Skypack, both Polish immigrants. She lived in Hoyoke until age 3, when her parents moved to a dairy farm in Southampton. Genevieve was the oldest of 11 children. Congratulations. She graduated Hoyoke Joseph P. Metcalf School in the 8th grade, but did not go further with her education because as the oldest, she had to care for her siblings and work on the farm. She was 18 when she met Stephen Pascoe at a polka dance at Mountain Park in Hoyoke. I remember mountain park dances. That'll tell ya. They were married in Mata Dela Rosa Church on January 29th, 1939, and lived on Chestnut Street in Hoyoke. Genevieve has three daughters, Emily, Joan, and Shirley, correct? Seven grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. When the Pasccos bought their farm on Pequot Road, they grew mostly vegetables. At the beginning, both worked other jobs, Genevieve at Spalding, and Stephen at American Bosch in Chicopee. For many years, she and her husband Stephen operated the farm. Pascoe also owned the share of the farmer's market on Avocado Street in Springfield, where they often sold their produce. Over the years, their farm specialty became raising and selling plants, and they're developing greenhouses behind their home. In the '70s, the Pascoe became the first Southampton farmers to sell their farmland development rights to the state to preserve most of their farmland as farmland in... boy, that's a lot of reading. Farmland in perpetuity, and sold part of the farm to the beginning farmers. Genevieve continued working in the greenhouses until the age of 83. That's impressive. In their later years, Genevieve enjoyed her winters with her husband and daughters in Marco Island, Florida. Stephen and Genevieve were married for 63 years, when Stephen died at the age of 90. She was a member of the Southampton Mothers Club, where she was the youngest grandmother, a member of the Pequot Civil League, Polish Women Alliance, and PNA Group 141. She is still happy that she is still at home and cared for by her family. Genevieve looks forward to all family gatherings, especially Christmas, Easter, and birthdays. She enjoys cards, bingo, and Red Sox on TV where her cat companion Smokey... I hope the Red Sox bring us some happiness this season. Genevieve hopes...
We hope.
We sure do, we sure do. Genevieve hopes and prays that she will live to be at least 100 years old, and when that happens, she wants to celebrate her birthday at the Delaney House in Hoyoke. It's my opinion, but you should take her there now.
Why wait till you're 100?
It said, "History of the Boston Post cane. 1909, the publisher of the Boston Post newspaper sent a gold tip, hand-decorated ebony cane to each of the 700 Massachusetts towns, with the understanding that the cane would be used by the oldest man in town and passed down accordingly. It was not until 1930 that the award was available to women. More than 460 canes remain." And I don't know if you saw it, but our cane is sitting out in the hallway outside this door in the case. They used to give it to people, but a lot of times, they never got it back. So, you can't have the cane, Genevieve. So, we have to present this, and... Do you mind if we take your picture with us?
If I take a picture with you?
We'll come to you.
Now, you have to sign that. That is hard to see. So, Ed, you want to take a picture first?
I'll come to you.
So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. Take a picture. Congratulations.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay.
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I think we're on. What?
There you go. You should've saw her. There you go. There you go. Congratulations. So, we're going to you.
Okay. I believe we're all set. Are we all set to go back? That was a very nice ceremony. Okay, we have quarterly reports. Capital Improvement Committee is up first. Charlie Conicki.
I am one member of the Capital Committee.
Oh, yeah. There you go.
What was that?
I just want people to be aware of here.
I... Yeah, a lot more than people ever realized.
Okay. Go ahead, Charlie.
Well, the Capital Committee was charged with basically looking at the large purchases and concerns of the town of Southampton. And over the last few weeks, the committee's been doing its due diligence to try to get around all these requests. These requests come up to close to $800,000 worth of funding, and I believe the committee has done a very good job of putting this all together. I dropped it into a PowerPoint with the hope of making it a little easier to explain certain parts to this. One must remember that this is part of a process. Once the Capital Committee submits its recommendations to the Select Board, then the Select Board charges its financial group, being the town accountant, the town treasurer, the town assessor, and the town administrator, to formulate this to present to you the actual draft articles for some middle-of-town meeting. So, what I give you is basically work in progress as we move forward. The first issue, which we met on a few months ago, and it's already been voted on at town meeting, is the allocation of $1.6 million in addition to the $1 million grant for the East Street Bridge. This is something that the Capital Committee recommended about two months ago. It's a matter of record. It went to town meeting. Town meeting endorsed it. It's now gonna go forward as a ballot question for the election. But it is incorporated into this presentation because it will play into the bottom numbers at the end of our accounting. The second issue that came up was the request for the Highway Department for a new dump truck. Now, I must tell you, the Highway Department has been on record for a number of years stressing the fact that they have two trucks that are deteriorating to the point where the frames are cracking, and they're not going to be able to be actually on the road. Note, I'm saying two trucks, we're looking at the allocation of funding for one truck.
Both trucks as size truck?
Both the size trucks. The reason of the picture is so everybody can understand, we're not talking pickup trucks here. That's why you're looking at that amount of money. We're looking at this as some type of formulated debt exclusion vote. Again, this will be your financial team that'll be putting this together as to how you approach it. The truck in itself, the trucks that we've looked at, Matt's looked at it with us too, they're in sad, sad shape. We have to do something, or... The other part of the problem is the equation of the town itself. We have basically the same size fleet that we had 10 years ago, 15 years ago, yet we keep accepting new roads in town as new subdivisions, which is expanding more plowing and service and so on, so forth, and we're losing vehicles and gaining roads. So, we need to step in and do something with this.
Charlie, we have two trucks like that, that size, that are in dire need for replacement. Out of how many trucks that size do we have in the fleet?
I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's five of that size.
Five total?
Yeah, I think there's five total of that size, and then I think there's four total of a smaller size. I think there's a total of nine, right?
Right.
But some smaller and some larger.
That size, what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Do you know what year those are? That is?
I did not break down the notes for this for the presentation, but they're aged. There's no question about the fact that in the...
It's a 95.
Yeah, and one of them's, that one's a 95.
Ed used to make it so that he would put the years on when he bought them, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
I remember that one being a 95, and I think the other one's a 97, but, you know...
And you have...
Cracking would be an understatement.
The last time we bought a dump truck was in 2013, just for reference.
Okay. So, the last time we bought a truck was in 2013, and the reality of it is, we need to keep our fleet up. And these are the primary workhorses of the town's Highway Department.
Looking ahead, I mean, because this is, looks like it's just the beginning of many to be replaced on the line. If we could have a schedule of projected, you know, life expectancy for this capital equipment, then we could kind of have a sense of what's on the horizon.
That schedule was submitted, I believe it was submitted to the Select Board about two months ago.
Yeah, so we, Ed did a great job putting this, a multi-year schedule together that all the departments put together.
That one I have, yes.
Yep, so we do, we have a schedule.
And one has to appreciate, when we look at these projected schedules, they are projected schedules. Sometimes, some things come up that are unanticipated. In this case, this truck has been pushed back, and the other truck's been pushed back a few years. The next issue is the William E. Norris School. The William E. Norris School needs to have sinks repaired. They need to have hot water installed in some of these sinks. There's some bubblers and stuff of that nature. We have carpeting in numerous rooms that need to be replaced. If memory serves, it's about 20 years old, the carpeting in there. What's happening is because of their age and stuff, based on the change in humidity, we end up with the carpeting rolling up, fraying and stuff, and they're becoming trip hazards in there. The doors of the building are basically rusting out. They are not weather tight. They are in question of being security tight, because they won't automatically close because the frames don't set with the jams.
That's all original doors, too.
That's all original doors. So, when we look at that, we're looking at $48,000. There's $10,000 in there to actually allow the school department to try and repair other doors. $38,000 in there for replacement that just have to be replaced. There's another $10,000 there to allow the staff at the school to try to service other doors that are deteriorating, to try to bring more life into them for a few more years. The other issue is the gutters. If you look at the picture, you'll see drainage coming off the roof. That's not a problem of the roof. That's a problem of all the storm drains around and the guttering. What's happened is these, well, first of all, it's 10,500, but what's been happening with this is the masonry has caulking in it, and that caulking to the left has shrunk, fell out, whatever, so they need to be recaulked. To the right is actually another picture of a door frame. So, you can see how the door frames have deteriorated. You can see how the caulking has fallen, and now what we're getting is water infiltration into the bricks. Once we get water infiltration and we start getting a winter action, we're gonna have ice cracking up the bricks, and then we're gonna have more structural damage. So, getting back to this a little bit here...
Can I ask you a question about this? I asked this before, and the board has changed. None of these things qualify for the Green Communities Grant, right?
The doors probably would, but there's also two more follow-up phases of doors that are about $50,000 that need replacement, so that's where I think we should look at using DOE, our funds for that.
The other small piece to this is some masonry work around the front pillars and that, because they've deteriorated because of the water actions and salt and so on, so forth. That gives us another debt exclusion vote of $97,800. So, between the East Street Bridge, the highway truck, and this part of the school are all looking to be some type of debt exclusion vote. This does not mean it's a Proposition 2.5 override. They're debt exclusion votes, and people need to understand that that's different. As I walk through this presentation, it'll get more clear as to where this is going. Now, we get into basically the potential life safety issues of the school. The fire alarm system, being 20 years old or so, cannot find replacement parts to maintain it. The issue is basically replacing the fire system in that building. That's $28,498. The sidewalk...
Before we go there, I mean, just to clarify for people listening, if the fire alarm system fails and we can't repair it, we can't use the school, correct?
The school is closed.
Right, so that's critical, right on the top.
That's why it ended up with the Capital Committee as a life safety issue, and that's why the Capital Committee recommended taking it out of the capital stabilization account. This doesn't go to town meeting, it doesn't go to town election or ballot question, it just goes to town meeting.
Two-thirds vote.
Right. The sidewalk or walks is another thing. Those sidewalks have become a hazard to everyone trying to get into the building. Here's some representative pictures of it. Again, that's a safety issue. People are...
Is that money to replace or repair the walks?
Basically, it will depend on how you want to phrase it, but it says sidewalk replace and repair. It'll all depend on where you're looking at.
So, they may cut some out, they may just patch?
Right, I mean, if you just look at these pictures, for instance, and you see it by the curb, well, that's so deteriorated by the roadway, you might as well just replace it.
The custodian that's in the school is a very valuable asset to us, because he's excellent, and he's very handy himself. When he presented on this, the repairs that will be done to this, if there are repairs as opposed to replacement, will be done very different than what we see here, and he explained that in detail to us, and that the way that it had been done historically was that it was patched, but it still allowed water intrusion, and so it would pop rather quickly. He had a guy that came and looked at it, and Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, that the person would dig that up and fill it with a type of like hydraulic cement and like a polymer-based substance that basically resists cracking, create a good seal that wouldn't necessarily pop in the near term as this one did, right?
That's the hope and the intent.
Yeah.
And you have to appreciate the fact that we're looking at sidewalks of 20 years. All right, any question on the school stuff before I move on? Now, we get into the dispatch center. Basically, what's happened is our dispatch center has become so antiquated that once again, we can't buy replacement parts and stuff. The photograph is just a dramatization of all the stuff that's there. There's servers and other things, but I didn't want to just give you these pictures of all this electronic stuff and say, "See?" Basically, this needs to be reevaluated, re-upgraded, so that it's a more professionally-operated facility. The Capital Committee felt that this, again, was a priority life safety issue, and that funding should come out of the capital stabilization account. And this has been asked for for the last couple of years. I remember prior police chiefs asking for this funding. This is not a new request.
So, this will replace all the computer equipment in dispatch areas? Is that...
It will replace...
No.
It would replace the radio consoles themselves. Ian O'Leary's, you know, interim chief of police. It would replace, a lot of those screens you see there are actually state 911-owned department screens for our 911 system. What it would replace is that small screen down the right, that's our radio consoles. And there's two consoles that we have in the dispatch center, so replace them and the components that go with them.
So, there's servers involved with the replacement?
There's a lot of, what happened, was described to me by, I contacted Goose Town, who we have contracted for our radio system, and what they described to me was that there's some form of a corruption in the electronic system. So, they don't even want to try to fix it, because if it crashes, then it's done, it's over. They won't be able to use it at all. And if that happens, there's no replacement parts. So, yes, there is, there's components as well, electronic and computer components as well, but it's not that entire setup. It's not all the computers in dispatch, that's separate.
Great, thanks. What's the approximate age of that?
That was installed in 2008, I believe.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ed, but my understanding is that this is allocated at town meeting, and the next day, you can start moving forward with repairing this.
We're gonna replace it, not repair it, from what the chief said, yeah.
Or replace, but the point is, the money is available after town meeting.
Are you asking to fund this, debt?
Capital. Capital stabilization.
Capital stabilization, yeah.
Which is already money that's...
You would just, we'd have to make sure, the way it was worded, that you didn't have to wait till after July 1st in the new fiscal year for it.
I'm trying to underline that, so when the articles are written, things like this can start moving right after town meeting.
It's a two-thirds vote, I guess.
Anything from stabilization would be a two-thirds vote.
Do we have to bid this out, public bid, because of the amount?
I'll have to go back and take a look. The state used to have a contract for communications equipment, which the last time I did this, which was probably, I don't know, seven or eight years ago, you could use the state contract, but you still had to go out and get three quotes from vendors under the state contract to do it.
That's a lot quicker, yeah.
Move forward.
Wait, I have one question. If we were to build a new safety complex, could this be transported there if it were in the next three to five years?
It's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Chief?
There shouldn't be a reason that we can't move the equipment.
I don't see a reason why.
Okay, this is curious. Like, instead of now, which we need, but then in five years, you're spending...
It's all electronic plug-in play, so...
Probably easier to move the new stuff than the old.
Well, we can move the old stuff, but I don't know what pushal basket you want to put it in.
Worry about unplugging the old equipment, it may not start back up.
This seems like something that qualifies as emergency management, kind of imagine there's no money saved or federal for emergency management?
No, this is basically looked at as operation maintenance of a town. It's not an emergency until it fails. You don't want to activate that. Okay, police department... There's servers and other things, but I didn't want to just give you these pictures of all this electronic stuff and say, "See?" Basically, this needs to be reevaluated, re-upgraded, so that it's a more professionally operated facility. The Capitol Committee felt that this, again, was a priority life safety issue, and that funding should come out of the capital stabilization account. And this has been asked for for the last couple of years. I remember prior police chiefs asking for this funding. This is not a new request.
So, this will replace all the computer equipment in dispatch areas?
It will replace.
It would replace the radio consoles themselves. Ian O'Leary's worth, you know, interim chief of police. It would replace, a lot of those screens you see there are actually state 911-owned department screens for our 911 system. What it replaces, that small screen down the right, that's our radio consoles. And there's two consoles that we have in the dispatch center. So, replace them and the components that go with them.
So, there's servers involved with the replacement?
There's a lot of, what happened, what's described to me by, I contacted Goose Towne, who we have contracted for our radio system. And what they described to me was that there's some form of a corruption in the electronic system. So, they don't even want to try to fix it because if it crashes, then it's done, it's over. They won't be able to use it at all. And if that happens, there's no replacement parts. So, yes, there is, there's components as well, electronic and computer components as well, but it's not that entire setup. It's not all the computers in dispatch, that's separate.
What's the approximate age of that?
That was installed in 2008, I believe.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ed, but my understanding is that this is allocated at town meeting, then the next day, you can start moving forward with repairing this.
We're going to replace it, not repair it from what the chief said.
But the point is, the money is available after town meeting.
Are you asking to fund this debt?
Capital, capital stabilization. Which is already money that's.
You would just, we'd have to make sure, the way it was worded, that you didn't have to wait till after July 1st in the new fiscal year for it.
I'm trying to underline that so when the articles are written, things like this can start moving right after town meeting.
It's a two-thirds vote, I guess.
Anything from stabilization would be a two-thirds vote.
Do we have to bid this out, public bid, because of the amount?
I'll have to go back and take a look. The state used to have a contract for communications equipment, which the last time I did this, which was probably, I don't know, seven or eight years ago, you could use the state contract, but you still had to go out and get three quotes from vendors under the state contract to do it.
Well, that's quicker, yeah.
Move forward.
Wait, I have one question. If we were to build a new safety complex, could this be transported there if it were in the next three to five years?
It's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Chief?
There shouldn't be a reason that we can't move the equipment.
I don't see a reason why.
Okay, this is curious. Like, instead of now, which we need, but then in five years, do you spend enough?
It's all electronic plug-in play, so.
Probably easier to move the new stuff than the old.
Well, we can move the old stuff, but I don't know what pushal basket you want to put it in.
Worry about unplugging the old equipment, it may not start back up.
This seems like something that qualifies as emergency management. Kind of imagine there's no money saved or federal for emergency management?
No, this is basically looked at operation maintenance of a town. It's not an emergency until it fails. You don't want to activate that. Okay, police department. They requested desktops, five computers, upgrade their window license, which is basically normal operations for the police department. That's fifteen thousand dollars. Recommending that comes out of the free cash account that we have. Police cruiser. You know what, seeing the chief is here.
This particular car, this is a 2011 Crown Victoria. It's got about one hundred and twelve thousand miles on it, and it's a daily user. It's just becoming old, it's antiquated. It's still in our fleet because we have a tendency to really maintain our vehicles very well. And so, we've been able to use it, and we use it as a daily runner now because, you know, all our newer cars are starting to acquire mileage as well, to include our newer fleet is a 2015 Ford Explorer that's already at a hundred thousand miles. Roughly, the cruisers get about twenty thousand, depending on their use, about twenty thousand miles a year. In particular, are the ones that are used on every shift. This particular car is used on the midnight shift.
Is this the last Crown Vic we have?
No, we have a Crown Vic that's an administrative car that, again, is just used for administrative or emergency purposes. And then, we have another one that's just, again, an unmarked one that we use for emergency purposes as well. But normally, those cars aren't in the line because they're just, they're not, they shouldn't be driven as hard as other cars now. They're just getting too old.
Is there any value to these auctions? Are there any reversion options?
Probably not anything significant, that's for sure. We'd have to auction them anyway, otherwise, we give them to the fire department so they can use them for training purposes.
I was going to say, we do it for the state, and we auction off the old police cruisers and all our old vehicles, and we surprisingly get a fair amount of money. So, if it's a couple grand that goes back to.
Oh, sure, I'm sure with all the, with this cruiser, sure. And maybe another one, yes, that's going to have to get recycled.
Take a little money back.
Sure.
Yeah, it'd just be a question of, could we get more money either as trading it in towards a new vehicle or auctioning it out straight out?
Anybody who's bought a car knows, the trade-in money is what they're going to give you off anyways. But, yeah, you're right. Thank you.
In a short-term borrow account, how long were you thinking?
My personal opinion is.
The committee's personal opinion.
The committee was open on discussion to that. They were moving it towards the financial advisors of the town to make that recommendation.
Best interest of the town.
Feel like I'm in court again. Fire department. Fire department's basically looking for nineteen thousand two hundred dollars. Out of that, twelve thousand dollars is for fire protective clothing. We didn't actually fund that this year. This has been one of these orphan child budgets relative to this year. There's been years where it's come out of the Capitol Committee. There's been, when we've been trying to get it to be just incorporated into the operational budget of the fire department. What happened last year, it was pulled out of the operational budget of the fire department to keep the budget as balanced as it could. So, the requests came back to us, not only to take and bring back some money for this year, but also for last year so they can buy the gear. That, if memory serves, twelve thousand dollars basic commands three or four individuals, covers three or four individuals for clothing. The other. No.
Last year, the end of the year, there was about twenty-six thousand dollars that was used towards other fire department clothing. I'm just curious as to why, we don't have anybody to speak to that, but it seems as if this has been on the radar, and we think that it would have been a higher priority to get fire protection gear than.
I can't answer what happened in the budgets at the end of the year. And the Capitol Committee doesn't see the budget operations the finance committee does with the select board. So, all I can tell you is, is we have been approached by the fire department, fire chief, saying they need the protective clothing. And we looked at it as a necessity and felt that it was a life safety issue. So, we were recommending taking it out of capital stabilization account. I can't speak to the other part to that.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think we all know what Reni's referring to. So, at the end of the year, if we have money in a particular budget, we should look at these items here and spend that money on these items versus stuff that.
Using it out of capital.
Yeah.
Discretionary spending versus necessary spending.
Well, the select board has the last say, and Robert's going to correct me, but at town meeting, when you move the motion for an article, to pass over an article if you feel that it can be funded at another source, or if you feel it doesn't raise to the merit of being needed to be funded.
Well, the example she's talking about was done, already done before we even knew about it. The money was spent, so we couldn't, we had no comment.
I'm talking about forward. I can't talk about backwards.
I think we should look now, between now and the end of the year, and see where there's some money and try to fund some of these things.
And that's, we look at it like it needs to be funded. We don't look at it like it shouldn't be funded.
Comments are more for these folks, left and right.
Yeah, it's really, you know, it's like the furnace. Okay, we are of the understanding that the furnace failed, and the furnace has been replaced. That, even though at much smaller scale, is similar to what happened to the Norris School when we basically told the Norris School to replace the furnace and seek the funding at town meeting. You have to have a furnace, or your fire trucks are going to freeze, and then, you're going to have long more than seven thousand dollars worth of damage. So, that's why that ended up there. Again, your committee decides the merits of stuff going to town meeting and ultimately decides at town meeting if they're going to move it forward. This is the fire department's administrative vehicle. This is another short-term borrowing. This is forty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars. This vehicle, I don't remember the age of it, but it has been requested for a number of years. I took the photograph to the right to just dramatize the fact that this vehicle is rotting out from the inside. That is the spare tire. And the fire chief was going down county road a few months ago, and it rotted off to the point that the brackets let go, and the tire went bouncing across the street. The vehicle is a first responding vehicle. We have our fire chief living in town and responding to calls. We now have a vehicle that is questionably safe. The feeling was, we need to move forward to replace this vehicle.
With what, another vehicle of the same, or?
Yes, basically the same type of vehicle, pickup truck.
Now, do they require any special equipment in this vehicle, like a police cruiser would?
I looked to the radio.
It would have radio siren lights, that kind of stuff. It wouldn't have, you know, radar detector. I don't see it having cameras all around it or anything like that. There shouldn't be a cage in the back, but there'll be a rack in the back to support other fire gear. So, you have to, it's kind of interesting because if you look at the price of the cruiser and you look at the price of this truck, they're only a few hundred dollars difference.
And I believe the intent was to replace it with an SUV-type vehicle. I know that the fire chief has had conversations with me of why it was a pickup purchased in the past. So, I know his intent was to actually replace it, whether it be with like an Explorer-type or something a little bigger than that.
Is there any value or interest in looking at a used vehicle, for instance? One that came off lease or something as a replacement to save, as a way of saving some money?
That would have to be explored by your financial committee relative to it. My gut tells me that because it's used, we might be buying problems.
Yeah, we're not. I mean, now, these days, more used cars are being sold than new cars. That, I'm just asking.
I understand, and I don't have, Francine, I don't have a yes or no answer for you.
Yeah.
You know, I wish I did.
Looking at saving, that's all.
The next one is the library roof, and we all know about the library.
Yes.
They're here. That building is twenty-plus years old.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three years old at this point. It is, has a roof that appears to be a fifteen-to-twenty-year roof. So, as you can see by the photograph to the left, the shingles are coming off. Ed has a sample for those of you that haven't seen a roofing shingle before.
Well, that's one right from the roof.
You have to put that back on.
And it is fairly thin.
It's a very poor-grade roofing material that was used some twenty-three years ago. So, basically, what we're looking at is, this is something that's obviously needs to be repaired now before we have to start repairing ceilings and books and so on and so forth.
This is for the full roof?
This is for the entire building. What we are looking at is taking twenty thousand dollars out of the capital stabilization account and taking twenty-four thousand dollars out of the operational stabilization account. And the simple reason is, there isn't enough money in the capital budget to fund this entirety.
Ed, how much does the capital have? I thought it had around four hundred thousand, or is that the operating?
Stabilization.
Yeah, the stabilization, capital stabilization.
Operational stabilization has about three hundred and sixty.
And the capital was like one eighty-six or one eighty-seven, I think.
Do you want me to tell you what it is?
No, no.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
Just to ask, to ask.
You have to go up to the podium, please.
Uh-oh, that's it.
You know I'm not afraid.
There it be.
Vicki Morrow, town accountant, Palmory Manor Road. So, operating stabilization, less any interest, you know, that we would post in the next couple of months, is three hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy cents. And capital is one hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty cents, barring any interest, you know, from, you know, March, April, May, June that we would post.
And then, there's free cash, right?
Yeah. Pardon?
And then, there's free cash, right? There's a third one?
No, we put that in. We put.
Free cash has seventy-seven thousand dollars left, approximately.
It's just for completeness because we are funding some of these things out of that.
Okay.
Any other questions, Vicki, before we get back?
Seventy-six, three, eighteen, twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vicki.
Thanks. So, basically, what we are looking at is, as we were drawing down on the capital stabilization account, if we pulled twenty thousand dollars out of there, we wouldn't have the other twenty-four thousand to take and fund this. So, the operation stabilization account came to mind as a necessity. It's what we call the rainy day account. And there's sufficient funding to do this roof without basically damaging that account. Then, we had the town hall administrator. The town hall administrator came forward requesting software for seven PCs. That's eight thousand twenty-nine dollars. The building commissioner was asking for three thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars for filing cabinets. That's basically for those large plans. These were viewed by the committee, and basically, the recommendation was, is take it out of free cash. Typically, if it's five thousand dollars or less, it doesn't even get to the Capitol Committee. It basically stays in the select office as to where we're going to go with this. But they went to us, so we gave that recommendation.
Ed, can you explain about the scanner versus the filing cabinet? We talked about that last time.
Yes, and the scanner may be able to be funded through CPC funds, according to Virginia Earhart. But my memory, and I know Art's here, I think it was, was it seventy-one hundred dollars for the scanner, the PC, and the monitor, which if we did that, basically, there would not be the need for the file cabinet drawers.
Then, we brought this up last time, so do you know, was it a problem with it not getting on the list? Or, like we talked about, why would we buy the ten drawer filing cabinet if the scanner is more in line with what we need?
It seems like they should put a request to the CPC.
That would last a lot longer and a lot more capacity.
Well, yeah, what came up was that they would probably pursue making a request of community preservation funds on the historic ends for doing that.
I think we're all be in favor of that rather than file cabinet.
Yeah, I'd rather see the scanner, I think.
So, we're going to keep this on here in case?
Yeah, but the other thing is, you know, these file cabinets are yay-bye-yay, and that takes up a lot of floor space.
Huge.
I mean, we still have hard copies of whether it's plans, maps, roads, what have you, that are going to probably still need to be stored, you know, for some time period, just having, rather than having them all electronically.
Would you mind checking with Tom and see if his recommendation is that we keep this on here or whether he's going to go in front of community preservation and request the scanner? Because I don't see the point in keeping it on here if the decision was made that the scanner is more appropriate, future-oriented, green, whatever you want to call it.
I think one of the questions that arose is, yes, the scanner is the ideal solution. However, we still have maps which are downstairs, not being protected in a fairly cold, moist, you know, environment. The question is, you know, how long will it be till we do have a scanner to protect what we actually existingly have?
Well, that room downstairs is supposed to be, has a humidifier and dehumidifier built into it? Does that not work?
That I can't speak to.
Okay.
It sounds like we just need to do some more follow-up before we decide what to do with the filing cabinet. Okay, Charlie?
Did you want to mention about the voting thing on there?
Oh, I'm sorry, I got sidetracked. The previous town clerk was requesting a new voting ballot machine in the neighborhood of six thousand five hundred dollars. We asked for a second quote. The second quote came in at over twelve thousand dollars. When we had a discussion with the present town clerk, there was the feeling that this may not be necessary. So, rather than allocating money, it's sort of like the filing cabinet, scanner thing, it was like, why don't the select board just hold six thousand five hundred dollars on the side at this point? And after the election, we'll see if everything's functioning right. Because even if we allocate it at a town meeting, you would never have it for this election anyways. So, let's see if they've gotten the issue resolved. Because when we had the last election with the problem, they brought down another machine from New Hampshire, and they corrected this machine. So, even Lucy was sort of like, I'm not sure whether to ask for it or not.
Can, in between elections, can we just rebuild, have it rebuilt, the machine we have now?
I think the one that we had was resurfaced. I don't know if she's here or not, but.
I thought that the problem was in last spring, we had that terrible rainstorm, and that a lot of them were jammed up. And then, they brought down a replacement from New Hampshire. We've had another election since then, and the machine worked fine.
Yeah, that's why nobody voted to authorize or request funding to move forward.
Just to hold the money in case.
Just hold the money on the side.
Let it test itself out a couple more cycles.
Yeah, okay. Now, Vicki, correct me if I'm wrong, but basically, this is about how much retired debt there is active in this town between, what, 2018 and 2020?
Yes, but there's distinctions, there's distinctions between debt exclusions and debt that's in the budget. So, you, did you get my email earlier?
You sent me an email at 3:30. Well, I'm on the road.
Oh.
I did not sit in an office and wait for your email.
I'm just asking if you read it, that's all.
I just skimmed over it.
Okay, so, basically, you know, when you, when you say we have four hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars coming off of taxes, I think we need to clarify that a little bit because the people are going to interpret that as, oh, we're not going to have to pay that much taxes for next year. The Norris School roof, as Charlie had mentioned, is included in that number. But currently, that was last year. It's not on our taxes, it's not in our debt schedule. I think we should eliminate talking about that altogether because it'll get people confused.
That's gone.
That's gone, it's done. It is not currently in the 2020 tax rate that people are.
Twenty-nineteen.
Twenty-nineteen, the one that people are paying their tax bills now. It's gone. But it is correct, the information is correct. Now, the Hampshire Regional Debt will come off as a debt exclusion, which will lower your tax rate. your tax rate, you know, a little bit. That's why last year, when we did the override with the Norris school roof, it wasn't as big of an increase as we originally anticipated, because that was coming off and the debt exclusion came off and the override went on. So Hampshire Regional will be coming off, so you'll lose a little bit, if you don't replace it, in your taxes. The pumper tanker and the Pequot pond will be finished being paid in 2020. So they are in this current budget cycle. But if you, I think you need to phrase it as, we won't have to pay that debt that's being retired, but we want to replace it with this. Because as we all know, if we take that debt off and we don't replace it, some other department's going to eat it up, because we are going to tax to our levy limit. There's no question, I mean, we're strapped for cash as it is. So it's not, I don't want people to think they're getting that money back in their taxes, I guess. So somehow, these numbers are correct, we just need to figure out how to better...
Well, it's more of a replacement argument, right? I mean, you're not getting it back in your taxes because we've, because we're...
You're either going to replace it, or another department's going to absorb that money, and we're still going to keep it in the budget for 2021.
What's the differential, Vicky, between the debt that's being retired and the debt that's being replaced from what's been proposed by the capital committee? Do you know?
Well, I think what she's suggesting is it's going to be, it's going to be an even swap regardless of whether it's absorbed by a debt exclusion or absorbed by the individual budgets. It's going to be an even swap regardless, right?
I ask, Vicky.
So, I'm trying to under, so if you take the Hampshire Regional high debt, unless the high school debt exclusion off, unless you replace one with the same amount of money, it's not going to be one for one.
Right.
So if you do, if you do the $250,000 for just the truck, it's going to be pretty even.
Vicky, hit the slide forward one.
Oh.
Hit her.
Okay.
So people think that this money is coming back. So technically, if the budgets, year to year, maintain exact same amount, then we can say this money will go back into your taxes, it will lower. But because there's always people looking for more money, gets absorbed.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't foresee if we have, you know, 20, was it 2040, like 50 grand in debt that we don't have to pay anymore and that's in the budget, we're going to replace it with something. Because the school's going to need it, highway's going to need it, police is going to need it, I'm going to need it, someone's going to need it. And my guess is you're not going to say, oh, well, we're not going to put that in the budget, because we want to save it for whatever. So I guess I just don't want people to think they're getting, their taxes are going to decrease by 400 and some odd thousand dollars per, you know, whatever that rate is comes out per thousand. But, so anyway, that's just, I just want to make sure we're clear and we're careful, because people half hear truth and half hear what you say, so...
Again, we're carrying that 456 for retiring debt in 2020. Is that accurate? Or the one that already retired is, should be taken off?
It should, I think it should be, I personally think it should be taken off, because it's gone.
It's gone, it's absorbed.
It's absorbed in this year's taxes.
And coming off taxes... That 456 includes Norris?
Yes, yes. I think what they're trying to do is saying, this is what we've done over the past two years, because we haven't replaced that debt.
Right, but we've used it. We've used the capacity.
We use it...
Which is, which is why coming off of taxes is probably not the best term.
We use the capacity in that we put the override in, and our rate for the override didn't go up as much, because that got absorbed. But it is correct in that if we put it back on, it'll just be, if we put more debt back on.
If we put that debt back on, it's going to cost the taxpayers more.
More, correct.
Not less.
Correct.
But that has to be done in a ballot. That's not our decision, that's the town's decision.
Debt exclusion has to be done in the ballot, both, yes.
Right, the town meeting and the ballot, the ballot has to pass.
Yes. So that's just my thought.
Thank you.
And I know I kind of picked it up.
That clarifies it too, because...
I just think we should clarify it for, for, you know what I mean? I mean, these numbers are right, but we should just clarify it.
Well, the 456 isn't exactly accurate. Subtract the Norris debt off of there.
Correct, take the Norris debt out of it, and you probably got a pretty good...
And also, I mean, the money's going to get used on something. It's just a question of whether it's targeted at the things that we've, that we're prioritizing, or whether it gets targeted at some things that we necessarily haven't prioritized.
Those two pieces of the 50 greens, you're not going to add as an exclusion, it's already in the budget, and you're going to absorb it somewhere.
The true picture is if we absorb this money, then we go for the debt exclusion that we're talking about, the taxes are going to raise by that amount, for the debt exclusion.
Yes, yes. Makes sense?
Yeah, you know, I'm just trying to, trying to put this together. It could be an easy read slide.
Yeah, that's why I made those suggestions.
There's too many moving parts.
Yes, of course.
So the conclusion is, with modifications to number, free cash expenses, $33,090, leaving you a balance of $43,228 and a quarter. That's your free cash. That's if you take and spend based on recommendation, that's what's left there. If we take the capital expenses from the capital account, it leaves basically $695. That's why we voted on life safety issues as a priority to come out of that account. The debt exclusion for, or however you want to phrase that, for the school and for the highway department, comes out to $346,500. I just threw this out just to talk, but if it was five years and you divided it up, it'd be like $70,000 a year plus interest. The East Street Bridge, which is 1.6 million, figure the bridge is going to be there for 20 years. Now, just to know, the bridge is there, is 100 years old. And it was designed for traffic of 100 years ago, okay? Which in this day and age is probably somebody's large wheelbarrow. So you can figure that bridge will last 20-plus years anyway, so if you were going to finance it, you'd look at a 20-year loan, and you'd be up to 149,000, 180,000. So those totals, if you did it this way, and this is not your financial committee reviewing this, this is just off the cuff, trying to get some numbers, you're looking at $150,000. If we, if we are, pardon?
Plus interest.
Plus interest. If we are retiring debt and taking Vicky's number of not counting the school, you're down to 320,000, give or take. So you're still...
Coming out ahead.
Coming out ahead on that retired debt, if you borrow this way.
If we structure that debt retiring that way.
Right. Remember, I'm not, and the committee is not, the financial advisors, we do the meriting of whether this request is necessary for the town and how to prioritize it.
I mean, basically, I think what we're trying to show is that we, you know, we, in our meetings, and there's several people here, I mean, we were discussing things, we were trying to look at what's already on the schedule, and what is coming off, what came off recently, what will be coming off in the next couple of years, in an attempt to, in an attempt to balance. Because these are, these are critical need items. We take them seriously, but we, at the same time, we also have to consider what we've already taken seriously in the past, and what's already sitting there, because we can't, you know, we got to balance everything. And so this, I like this summary side, because it does, it does show what happened one year ago and what's going to happen in a couple of years. And we're making an attempt at balancing and even saving, really.
I think it shows a way that we can do it if we're disciplined in the budget process the rest of the year.
If we pay attention to where we're going, we should be okay. Now, the other part to this is the borrowing for cruiser and fire SUV or whatever, you know, that's around $93,000. If you were to divide that in five years, it'd be like $18,600 plus interest. According to my understanding, and Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, if we do this borrowing in the coming year, the finance committee and its selectmen don't have to come up with $18,000 in this coming year's budget. They basically have to come up with some of the interest for that, because by the time these vehicles are purchased, part of the year have already gone by. So, Ed, you can speak to that better than I can.
Yes, generally, the principal portion is due 12 months after you actually borrow the money. You know, with these, you put together the specs. In some cases, they're built, so it takes a little bit of a while and whatever, so you know, we wouldn't be actually getting or receiving the vehicles until July or probably later, maybe August or what have you. So the principal amount would be due in August of 20, did I do this right? 2020, which is fiscal year '21.
If I can put the chief on the spot.
Remember how long the turnaround was for the last cruiser?
I do not, but I can say that it would be advantageous to move on it as soon as possible, because the next generation cruisers are coming out, which are considerably more expensive. And right now, the state contractor, MHQ, has enough available, but they're going to come out, they're going to be purchased soon. The next generation cruisers are going to be hybrids, and they're considerably more expensive. And preferably, I don't like to get the next generation of a vehicle first time around, because they got to work iron out their quirks. So for the cruiser in particular, and probably for the fire vehicle, it's important to move on that quicker than, because there's a limited supply at MHQ, who has a state contract.
You know what the base model's going to be, the new one coming out?
I don't, I don't.
Okay, next...
Next? This concludes, this is the conclusion.
Where, okay, you got the highway, so it looks like for five years, we'll be into it for $88,000 plus $80,000. Then after the five years, we just have the $80,000.
I lost you completely.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, obviously, the East Street Bridge is going to be a very, is a long-term investment.
Yeah, the East Street Bridge is good, but the rest of them drop off in five years. And that's another mechanism playing back into us maintaining our fleets and trying to have this as reoccurring normal operation of funding. So having a five-year slot seems to be a working number for reallocation for equipment.
Any questions for Charlie on this? Thank you very much, we appreciate it. And thank you, Matt, you're on the committee.
Thanks, Charlie.
Somebody want to flip the lights on, please? Everybody wake up?
Good morning.
Just while we're waiting for the finance committee, I was remiss, I wrote it down, but I forgot. This week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, which is really National Dispatchers Week. So we just want to give a shout out to our dispatchers, and they do a great job in between the police and the fire department. So if you're listening, thank you very much, we appreciate all the stuff you do, and you can pass along our thanks to them. Thank you. Okay, we have finance committee next. I saw John, oh, there he is. How you doing, John?
Right in front of you. Tonight, I am the finance committee. John Labrie, Finance Committee Chair. As far as the finance committee goes, one of the biggest things coming up is the election. After the election, there'll still be three open seats. There's only one person on the ballot. It'll be myself and somebody else, which means there will be no quorum the day after the election, as far as, as far as the finance committee goes. All this year, the last year, I was, I was brought on in May, and for that whole year, we struggled getting members. The select board had nominated a few. We never had a full committee. There's five seats. At the most, we had four. We have four right now. Sharon, who's the veteran, I think she's been six years, I think, on the finance committee, has family obligations, and she's not coming back. Claudia was nominated, was nominated by the, I'm sorry.
Appointed by the...
Appointed by the select board, and she will not be coming back as well. So that leaves Gloria, who is on the ballot for this, this coming election. I have to say, she's probably got a pretty good shot getting in there with three open seats. Four open seats, actually, so. So, anybody wants to join us? Love to have you.
And you meet every other week or every week?
Right now, we're meeting every week. Typically, every, right. Every other week or as needed. Throughout the summer, it's, we're not needed as much once things get out of budget season. So it's not a, it's not long meetings, but, you know, this time of year, it is, it is getting into some long meetings, but it's, it's important, and I think we need, we need some help. So if anybody out there wants a spot...
One person just to conduct business after the election.
After the election, there'll still be three open seats, correct?
Ideally, three people, so. Anyways, interested, let Ed Gibson know, and we can make appointments as needed. Or we can do write-in campaigns too, so...
You can do that, too. A write-in would be better, because then you could fill a three-year spot without, otherwise, I think if they're appointed, it's only good for them to...
Pardon me? There was one person got elected with six votes, as I remember.
Two, requires two.
Two votes? Our town moderator says two votes. So if you know anybody, let Francine and I know, and they're in.
There you go. So it's, I mean, the people that are there are great, though. We work really well together, and, you know, we, we have our differences, of course, which is good. But I think overall, we work really well together. As far as the budget reviews go, they went really well. We met with a lot of great people from all the committees, or department heads. They had great ideas and very nice presentations. The, the problem is the revenue coming in. We, we can't help everybody, and that's the biggest problem where, and we told them that, too. It's like, we really want to help everybody out, but you can't, and you feel bad for it, but, so it leaves you in a tough spot. That's the toughest part of the, the job is making these recommendations, which in the end, it's you folks that are going to have to decide exactly what to do. So again, it's just a recommendation from us, so...
So your recommendation is for level funding?
With a COLA, 2% COLA.
2% COLA, and the COLA is, don't, we don't want everybody to get excited out there and all of a sudden say everybody's getting 2%, because we've got to decide on that, so you...
Right, the 2% is just a suggestion at this point, and the select board has to decide where that's going to end up. If it's one or 1.5, you know, wherever that ends up is up, is up to, is up to you guys.
So level funding, was there any special areas that you gave special review of and gave them more than level funded? Just trying to generalize for everybody out there.
Well, I know the highway department needed an extra $35,000 for their stormwater management.
Unfunded state mandate.
Unfunded, correct, because it's an unfunded mandate. And I believe the Conservation Commission, I believe, was looking, they don't usually have a budget, and I believe they were looking for...
Budget was taken away.
They were looking for $26,000. I think we ended up, I think they were given $5,000. So it was...
Small enough.
Small, but, you know, it was talked about in the meeting, how it's kind of a slap in the face, but, you know, it's better than zero, I guess.
You're kind of starting them off somewhere.
Right, right. So...
So, just even more generally, John, so level funding plus two, plus a COLA to be determined, that, that balances it? I mean, plus the MS4 stormwater?
No, the stormwater's in there.
Yeah, no, I understand that, so I'm including that, but that's, that balances the budget, or is there other...
Well, I see something about the border health in there.
Yeah.
There was an increase there.
That's within the balanced budget as well.
Yes, but that was above the...
Yes, that was another, that was another one.
Yeah, I'm just looking to try to point out the items that are outside of the, I mean, level funding makes sense. I think COLA makes sense from a wage perspective. What were the things that were outside of those two things? So we listed two, right? Jim, you mentioned health director salary and MS4 stormwater, so that's two. What were, what were the other things?
Oh, boy, off the top of my head.
IT for this building.
IT, right, IT for this building.
Concom, right?
Right, that was 5,000, I believe.
Increase to the reserve fund.
Oh, correct. And that there, that came about because it was, there was... And that there, that came about because there was, there was money that finance team suggested keeping some money for building maintenance, whether it was highway, fire, school, whatever, town hall. And it was suggested to put it in small pockets, small amounts in each department for building maintenance. And we simply suggested to put it into the finance committee reserve fund so that it could be distributed as needed with amounts needed, because it could've been more or less for a particular building if they needed something like the HVAC repaired or something like that. So we thought it, it could be better, better used or allocated if we could distribute it. But again, that's, that's your, your decision in the end.
Building maintenance was underfunded in general last year, anyway. Ed, is that what you advise? Is having a pot of money and the distributing as it's needed?
It became a compromise, an affair compromise towards the end, because we weren't going to be able to fund really any of the departments and probably what was really needed, but at least this way, there is additional money in that reserve fund, so that if something came up, like another boiler blowing up or something else, that, okay, there is at least somewhere to go for it, to get it repaired during the year, other than either waiting for a special town meeting for another appropriation, or waiting through the entire year till May and June when you can do transfers.
Any questions for John? Any more questions?
Yeah, I mean, I do, and it might just be because I'm confused about something, but it's, it's worth me just asking this. So these last two columns on the right, and I know not everybody can see this, but we got fiscal year 20 request level funded plus 2%. You see, you following me, John?
Yes.
That is the, that is the, that number in that column is supposed to be the difference between what we are doing presently this year and FY19.
Yeah.
And next year, correct? Am I, unless I'm missing something?
Can you help me out here?
So you're looking at which column?
Well, there's, there's these last two columns, which I think are meant to represent the difference between this year and the year that we're going into.
The one that says fiscal year 20 request level funded plus 2%.
Yeah, and then there's another column, fiscal year requests versus FY19 override.
And that's the difference between 19 and 20.
Right, so it's the difference between what we actually appropriated for the override minus what people requested, and then the last one is what the recommendation from the finance committee was, the level funded plus 2% minus the override.
So their column is the last column?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but like, so for instance, so just explain to me what the, what, like, we'll just start with the first one here. Fiscal year 20 request level funded plus 2%. That's the column that we're, that we're focused in on right now. Like, if you take the first line, government expenses, certification stipends, a thousand dollars. Well, if I, if I look over to the left, it doesn't look like that was funded, that was zero-dollar funding, correct?
In 19?
Yep, in 19, so, so there, and the, and the recommendation is that we increase that to a thousand dollars, is that correct? Or is it to increase it, or is it, or is it in the next column, increase it to two thousand dollars, which means that the difference between the two of them would be a two-thousand-dollar difference? Like, I'm just struggling with this, because, like, if I'm just going across this line, it looks like we've never funded this. And now it was requested at three thousand, which we're not funding it at that level, but we are funding it at two thousand, so what is this number?
So delta between what people requested versus what the level funded is?
Well, level funded is zero, because it's been zero. Am I, unless I'm losing, unless I'm missing, missing-
Well, this is one of those, this is one of those pieces that, because people have their certification, we, we passed statutes at town meeting where we have to pay that out hurriedly every year. So it wasn't, this is minus, this right here is what people asked for minus what the level, what the-
Requested is.
It's not level funded from previous years, because we pass that at town meeting, we have to pay those charges.
Just be your request was three thousand dollars.
For certifications.
Yeah, but in looking at this column, it looks like it's presented as, is this is the difference between last year and this year. Am I, am I incorrect in assuming that? This is not the difference between what we're paying presently.
This is the difference between what people requested and what the level funded is. So this is what they asked for, this is what the request was, and this is the level funded.
So shouldn't this number be a negative number? If it's the difference between the requested amount?
You, you could look at it that way, but I guess I-
I wanna know, does any of these columns represent the difference between what we're presently paying and approved to pay in their budget right now, and what we're looking at next year?
I think the far-right column does that.
Yeah, you're missing a column.
Well, no, well-
Yeah, actually, there's one more column, which is on a separate page.
So right here, the last one's whatever was-
I'll bring it up on my computer. I appreciate that, but I am missing a column on my, on my, yeah.
Sorry, this is what we did for override.
All right, all right, I'm sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
Clearly, I'm missing a column, but I'm like, looking at this, and I'm like, the math just doesn't work for me. Have that last column?
Are you looking at what I'm looking at?
And I'm clearly chopped the column.
Right. You have one in the box.
I, I have, I have, I saved it to my computer, so-
No, I end right here.
Thank you, Vic, and I apologize, I was-
I end here, here. I'm missing that column.
Looking at what people ask for, what we're giving them, what-
Yeah, there's one more. If you go halfway back, you'll see the missing columns.
Oh. So are we going through this line by line?
I don't know if we're doing that next, but I believe we are.
Here we go.
We got it.
Our last column.
We gotta go through this line by line.
Absolutely. All right, I think tonight is your night. Is what has to be-
Are we doing that next?
Ed, on the budget here, do we need to go through this tonight, or do we, can we do it at the next meeting?
No, we should go through it tonight, because it's gotta be in stone and written up.
I think it's gotta be by the 22nd or 23rd, so-
22nd is for, yeah, the signing of the warrant.
16th, 17th?
Yeah.
16th?
Today's 16th.
Okay. Okay, so we've gotta go through this line item by line, um, so before we do that, let's look at this agenda.
You all set with me?
Probably not, because-
Oh, I'll be around.
Oh, you're gonna stay here?
Yeah, I'll stick around.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, and that's listed under new business.
Yeah, so this is gonna take us a while, I'm just looking at the agenda. Can we take a quick break from the finance end of it and go to the PQB, so they could present and leave? That sound reasonable to you folks?
Sure.
Okay, so PQB, who's representing? Ever you are?
You're up, Art.
We didn't wanna make, make you wait two hours till we get done this.
Art Lawrence, 113 Corquet Ledge Road, Chair of the Personal Policies and Procedures Board. You're talking about the article, John?
I'm just, quarterly reports.
Oh.
You're right here for quarterly reports.
That, I can't tell you much, because I wasn't prepared for that. I thought I was here tonight to discuss the article, to make the board go from elected to appointed.
Yeah, that's one of the things you've been dealing with in the last quarter, so it falls into that parameter.
Yeah, go ahead with that.
So, you know, to, I believe, make the operation a lot more efficient, because things are changing so much in this area, you know, trying to keep up with family leave and blah, 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 it's just, it's just overwhelming for a bunch of volunteers. Now we have a, a full-time TA, Town Administrator, and we really need to form an HR group. Hate to admit it, when I was in my professional life, the only group I hated was HR. And so what do I do? I end up in sort of an HR position. Maybe that's, somebody's getting back at me after all these years. We need to be a little quicker on our feet. Things for us, and it's nobody's fault, sometimes can take up to six weeks to process and to get, to get personal change forms, things of this nature, through the system, and that's just not acceptable. Like I say, it's nobody, nobody's fault. I think we've done most of the heavy lifting. We have taken care of the rules and regulations, spent a lot of time on that, almost two years, and they're pretty up, up to date and are utilized today. We've also done the rewrote, with help from department heads and such, the, all the non-contract job descriptions, and we have classified each of these positions. So I think we've got a leg up there. So that's why we would like to put this in front of the, of the town, to make it, like I say, more efficient, and having somebody like Ed who can contact all his, his resources when things change, that's stuff that we don't have the ability. He can certainly get in touch with other town administrators and other people, and, you know, keep ahead of all these fast-changing plans. I guess you can't say mandates anymore, person dates down from, from, from Boston. As far as a summary for the quarter, that's pretty much what we've accomplished, and like I say, I'm very thankful and thank Jim Palermo and, and George Plouffe, and of course, Matt's been part of it, and also Gloria York. It's been a really good team, and it's been a, it's been a pleasure. Any questions?
No questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Art.
Okay, we're going back to the budget. Is there any way, Ed, that we can pop this on the screen? Make life a lot easier.
I can, probably, I probably can.
John, is it any, possible to do this Town Administrator Report, or are we gonna do that after?
No, we can do that now while we're trying to hold up. Ed, do you want to go through your town history?
Sure.
And they may need the adapter out of the bag.
Okay. First up, the select board will need to meet after their April 22nd meeting and before the May 7th annual town meeting, in order to hold a public hearing on exercising the town's right of first refusal for Lot 2E at 68 Pomeroy Meadow Road. A 14-day notice and a newspaper is required before the public hearing. There is a meeting tentatively scheduled for May 2nd to make up for the meeting, which would have originally been on April 30th, so that may work out for this. The highway department has been taking part, split into two groups for fall training, offered through MYEA. This training covers some of the new OSHA requirements for municipalities in the state of Mass. One group went last week, and the second group of highway employees will be attending this week. It's, it's training for being on ladders, roofs, or any, any high points. There is a mandatory webinar for the drinking water grant requirements, which I will have to attend tomorrow morning at 11:00 AM. VHB is expecting to have the draft geotechnical report for the East Street Bridge designed to us by the end of this week, and I will forward that along to you. The preliminary work tree cutting is continuing on Glendale Road for that road improvement project. We have not been notified by Mass DOT that they have approved the contractor's traffic safety plan for this road reconstruction project as of yet. The highway department has completed its cleanup around town from the debris which was left in, in and by the roads from the late February windstorm. Let's see, and we have received the contract documents from the state for the drinking water grant, if the board would like to authorize them to be signed for that contract, for the drinking water grant for the Pomeroy Meadow Road. Old business, the town hall generator. The generator has been through its startup phase and commissioning, and is now running and available should the town hall lose electrical power at any time. Thank you to Senator Humison for helping earmark that funding to purchase and install the emergency generator for the town of Southampton here at Town Hall. Gun Road Extension, traffic control request. The radar sign is currently out and running on Gun Road Extension. It will record speeds for another two weeks before finishing that data analysis. And the traffic speed study on Route 10, Mass DOT has finished the preliminary work on that speed study, but was waiting for warmer weather to complete the study. And then upcoming Board of Sleutman meetings, April 22nd, May 2nd, and May 7th, before the annual town meeting.
Okay, now going back, Ed, to G. We have the contract documents, we have them here, so we need a motion to sign the state drinking water grant.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Can we just have the amount of the grant, so we can let people know?
It's 210,000. Is that the exact amount? 110?
I thought I remembered seeing 213-something, but whatever's written on that document should be the correct amount.
Is this the one, $216,162?
That's it.
$216,162.
I did get, they sent, ended up sending me, us, three different sets of them, so whatever that last one says should be the correct amount.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay, any more discussion?
Hold on, we got a first and a second, I think we gotta take a vote.
Is there any more discussion?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Perfect.
Can I ask another question about the Town Administrator Report, Ed?
Yes.
The town, the new generator, it's great that we now have a generator for this building. I think it's a long time coming, it's part of the emergency plan. How does it operate in a backup, and who has authorization to get it going?
Actually, this one is fantastic, and unless something goes wrong with the system, it is programmed automatically to come on when we lose power. It is also programmed automatically to run every Tuesday for a short amount of time. And then, once a month, it needs to be run for about half an hour. And so far, David Wells, the custodian, and I are the two that know how to do that, but would like to train some other people.
So it has to be manually run once a month, but then once a week, is it an automatic thing?
It's programmed automatically, correct.
Comes on automatically whenever?
But even the tests, the tests are automatic.
Yeah, every Tuesday.
Mm-hmm, that's great.
And does it run all the AC in the building, or just certain parts?
That, we haven't, I have my doubts whether it'll run the AC in the entire building, under full love like July or August. Other than that, it will run everything we have, heating-wise, you know, lighting, computers and what have you, but, like I say, I, I question whether it'll run all the air conditioning during July and August.
The reason I ask is I know in the past, people have talked about it being a cooling shelter for the elderly, and on this end, so it would probably run these units, but maybe not the entire building.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll know a better answer to that when we get into the warmer months and actually, yeah, and actually try it and see, and see if the load for everything, including all the air conditioning, will hold.
That's what was happening.
Thanks. That was a nice project to wrap it up.
It was a great project.
I just wanted to thank Jim Labrie, because he started doing a lot of quotes way back when, how long ago, Jim?
Well, three years.
Yeah, so anyway.
It was all those quotes that he had done that I used to do the spec when we went out the bid, so, yeah.
Welcome.
And then the only other thing is, would the board like to use that May 2nd meeting date to do the public hearing for the right of first refusal on Lot 2E on Pomeroy Meadow Road?
I would say yes.
Have another, as opposed to having another meeting? Yeah.
I think it would be-
I mean, we can, we can get it published, it'll meet the 14 days and whatever, so it kinda made some sense, but- I mean, we can get it published, it'll meet the 14 days and whatever, so it kind of made some sense, but.
Yeah, I'd rather get it done the rest of the year.
We had changed because of the open space event that's at the church.
Is everybody okay with the May 2 meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do it, Ed. So we've got everything up there. If somebody could grab a light over there, we'll shut the light off.
What I'm thinking of doing is hiding columns AC, AD, and AP because they're, our current budget.
Our current budget is column AH, correct?
Yes, that is, that's currently. What we voted at for town meeting, it doesn't include any transfers or anything that happened during the fiscal year.
It does not?
No, it does not.
Okay, none of those columns do though? None of those columns, though, do, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the most accurate representation of our current budget. I mean, I just want, I want to be able to.
You're comparing budget, you want to compare what you passed at town meeting to what you passed at town meeting, I guess, right?
Of course, and what I want to try to show is the columns to the right because that's where the real analysis is. And if I can hide some of these, it would do that.
You've got to hit Enable Editing up top first.
Michael Redd, no, didn't, okay.
Yeah, that makes it good.
All right.
Can you make that any bigger?
Yes, I can. How's that?
Ah, it's really good.
It's about as big as I can go. No, there we go, okay. It's as big as we're going to get here.
Okay, let's get going. So we'll go line item by line item. If you have any questions, let us know. If not, we're just going to go to the next one. So we're going to start off with the select board expenses. It looks like that's level funded, so no issue. In the minutes, same thing, level funded.
Well, no, I mean, oh, okay, you're going down, all right, we got it.
Certification stipends, the request was $3,000, we're funding at $2,000. So this is an increase of $2,000 over the budget. Internet from $1,200 to $27, so, no, I'm sorry. Requested $2,700 has gone to $1,500, so it's got an increase of $300. Any questions? No, I'm going to keep going unless you say something, okay? Web page.
Well, I mean, just because every little, every dollar is going to end up mattering and adding up here. I don't personally know what certification stipends are, so.
Those are, those are the ones that we have to get is treasurer and town clerk, if I'm. And correct me if I'm wrong legally, we have to do that based on the education?
Do we pay this every year automatically?
This is new.
So Vicki Morrow, town accountant, Palmeroy Meadow Road. It was back in May of '18 for '19 budget, or no, because Donna was still here, so '17 budget. There are provisions in the state statute for the financial individuals that work for communities, collector, treasurer, collector, accountant, town clerk, and assessor to receive a $1,000 stipend if they get their certification, which is set forth testing and stuff done by the state. I just took my test, I won't know for another couple of weeks. I took it back in March. Martha passed hers and Jen, I think you were thinking of taking hers. You take it in August, yes.
Makes sense.
And that's $1,000 every year, so.
Got it.
Per person.
So who's not going to get theirs?
Yeah, tell, yeah, why is it at $2,000 then?
Yeah, is somebody not going to get their stipend?
If it's under law and they're, all three of you pass it, we have to do it. That's not a good place.
We did, because it wasn't in the budget to begin with.
But we should budget it properly.
I don't disagree with you.
Okay, so that's one thing we need to adjust. Can you keep track of those, Vicki?
Well, I can put it in this column if you'd like, in column AQ.
Okay, so maybe you could head it, BOS changes or something like that so we know.
Yeah, BS change.
You, well, okay, so you want to just do plus $1,000?
Be $1,300 total.
So do you want to, do you want to do, you want to do?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
How do you want to do this, so that we?
How about BOS recommendation? That way we'll put $3,000 in it.
BOS recommendation, okay.
And Martha, congratulations.
But shouldn't we alter the?
Well, right now it's going to take so long, let's.
Okay. Yeah, but if we alter, if we change the color over here and alter it, it will give us the correct, it will automatically tally at the end for us where we are. That's all I'm saying.
What do you want to, so then what are you suggesting?
I think that $2,000 should be changed to like a red or something and that we change it tonight or a different color.
This one?
Right, and that will keep the total when we get to the end, otherwise we're going to have to go back and do all the math.
Okay, so you want to change this to red?
Yeah, and I make it three. So we change that one and we can put the delta in that other column that we changed it by, which is $1,000.
Hold on.
That's all.
So you want to change this to $1,000?
Yeah.
I think that's the delta, we added $1,000 there.
Yeah, I could put just plus $1,000 if you want to.
Plus $1,000, then we can just sum it.
Your $3,000 didn't work.
Yeah, but you want to do $3,000 right here.
Correct. This way the column will be totaled properly.
There you go, okay, and put red, put it in red.
Okay.
Okay, we have a plan. Want to bring it back to the left? Maybe red's not the best color because we can't see it.
Okay.
Just do the numbers red, not the box red.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Look at that, perfect.
I'm going to catch on to this really quickly here. I know that I'm fumbling, but I am a Mac individual, working on a PC.
That's really good.
You like that? There we go. How about that, bolding on? There we go, okay, so we'll go over here. Here we go, internet service.
Okay, we only have 1,000 lines to go. Internet service was $1,200, they requested $27, we put $15, so it's an increase of $300.
Make the $15, $1,200.
$15, $1,200.
Because if we, if we don't have the money to go up to the next tier at $2,700, then we will not be able to use the cloud backup.
So $1,200 in red and put $200 to the far right, I believe.
Yeah, but minus $200.
Or $300, yeah.
It would be a minus. $300, minus $300.
$1,200?
$1,200 in red.
Up there and minus 3 in red to the right.
Ed, is this why we're having the difficulty we're having now?
No, this is internet service.
And a negative 300, yeah.
Which is with Charter Spectrum.
We don't care what.
Can I go back and ask a question? So we haven't, you know, finalized or made a vote about the COLAs or anything, but are contracted services also subject to a 2% increase or only regular employees? I'm just looking at.
You're talking contracted staff?
Yeah, like minutes, for example?
No, it's just employees.
It's just employees, okay, not contracted people.
No. Whatever's in their contract.
It's just the vendor.
Yeah, are you talking contracted people like the fire chief, police chief, that type of contract?
No, no, by contracted I mean somebody who's hired to do a particular job, so.
So vendors, no. Okay, webpage maintenance remains the same, employment advertising the same?
Number 12, we could probably go minus $5,000 there.
There you go.
So that, is this that 2% I'm assuming in there? Okay, and again, we can play with that as needed. Administrative, that's that 2%. Administrative expenses, level. Photocopy or lease, actually it's level, they requested more, but it's level funded.
Well, it's a contract, so why would that vary from request to?
Contract ends.
Well, we signed a contract.
But we also purchase paper and what have you, and you have overages. So depending on how much the usage is, we'll be, end up being a little bit over this year. We were a little bit over last year, so.
You've got to pay the click charges.
So you'll have enough in there as well, basket.
No, we'll have to transfer funds, but we'll transfer funds.
Okay.
So postage remaining the same, fincom remaining the same. Reserve fund, interesting, it was five, requested five, now it's 10, 3, 8, 4.54. Any, does it make sense?
This was the default last week at the finance committee meeting when we were talking about different things to do when making changes and there was some funding that was still on the table that was available. And the question arose of, do we try to break that down into like either $2,000 or $3,000 little subgroups and add it into the police station, the library, the town hall for building maintenance? And we ended up as a group kind of deciding that, well, rather than doing that, why don't we just take it and put it into the reserve fund? And if something came up that was unforeseen next year, that there would be additional funding in the reserve fund for any of those buildings or departments that, to go through and to request funding from, rather than maybe putting it into, splitting it up into different departments and find out you put it in the wrong department or the wrong amounts in the wrong department.
But the reserve fund is strictly at the
Emergency.
Vote of the finance committee, so anybody can go after that money by putting in for it. So it seems like an odd place to put it.
Well, that's true, except the finance committee did note why they were putting it in there for a specific reason. And hopefully they will remember that next year when people come forward for it.
So it's been earmarked and then
Yeah, I don't.
any, anything that's left over out of this category would roll into free cash for the following year.
Correct, or get transferred.
Or get, yeah.
Or absorbed into some other expense.
Right, but I mean, if it's unused, it would, you know, rather than stay within the department.
I mean, I don't, I personally think that this should be reverted back to $5,000. I mean, it's not clear to me exactly what the purpose of this fund is and why you couldn't use things like cap stabilization, operational stabilization, free cash to serve the same purposes as this fund for items that are unforeseen.
It's time, I think, right?
I think if we start.
Timing is, time is the biggest difference. For your stabilization funds, you need a town meeting. For a transfer, it's either May or June. Reserve transfer, you can do any time of year.
Any other thoughts on this before?
Well, it's just not tight. I mean, if we're trying to really try to get budgets to be predictable, it's just not consistent with what we're trying to do.
And plus it starts a precedent, once people know they can hide the money in a column. I mean, I personally agree with you, Matt, I think it should be $5,000. What the rest of you think?
So do we want to vote on that or do we want to?
Well, that's why I'm asking that, we don't have to do an official vote, but Francine, Jim?
My feeling really is to kind of leave it where they, in the reserve fund. Because again, if it's unspent by the department for the purpose it was intended, somehow the money still gets spent during the year. At least we know if there's any surplus of this money at the end of the year, it rolls into free cash.
I agree. So you're suggesting it needs to go up?
Okay, so I.
You're suggesting it should stay at the same amount for the same reason?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I'm suggesting, no, 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 no. I'm suggesting going with the 10. And anything that's left over from that 10 would roll into free cash automatically as opposed to what I'm saying, if you, if you take that, the $5,384 and distribute it among the different departments that we're talking about and they don't use it, it'll be gone in some, it will be spent for some other purpose.
It could be more preserved here.
Yes.
I think the voters should decide.
Yeah, I think the voters should decide too. And I think that as we get lower on this list, we're going to find, we're going to find reasons why we're going to need this money.
So let me say this, why don't somebody make a motion and then we'll do it that way? What do you want to do here?
Sure, I mean, I move to reduce that line back to its level funded request, given in the spirit of this where it looks like we're level, trying to level fund with a COLA to reduce that request of $5,000 as requested, frankly. I mean, it was also, let's be clear, that was also the request.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, the other thing I see here is if we take that $5,384 out and we put it somewhere else in the budget, it's going to become a recurring expense for that department.
Well, again.
It's going to cost money.
But if it's not reoccurring, then why hold it there? Yeah, okay, so anybody else before we take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
So 3-2 on that, so it'll go back to $5,000.
I mean, look, I mean, we can bring this, it's not like we can't revert later on if we, if we don't see something that's glaring. You know what I mean?
Town accountant salary, I'm going to move forward, that just has a 2% it looks like. Can you roll it?
Uh, yeah, I just, I probably should do.
No problem, go ahead.
Minus 5.
Yeah, minus 5, 3, 8, what was it?
5, 384.
.54 was it?
I don't remember the change. Was it 52?
.54, Matt.
.54?
Yeah. I think it's just going to round it off for you.
Is it?
No, I can't.
Okay.
You've got a long ways to go.
Okay, assistant accountant wages, if I'm wrong on the assumptions, Vicki, let me know, but that looks like just 2%.
Correct.
Independent audit, requested is the same as funded, so that's fine. It went down $1,000. Town accountant expenses, requested $2,500, it was funded at $15,65. It was at 865, so there's an increase. We went through that at other meetings, does anybody want to ask Vicki again?
I do.
Okay, go ahead. Vicki, you want to explain that?
Sure, Vicki Morrow, town accountant, Palmeroy Meadow Road. Yeah, there's a lot of classes that accountants should be taking throughout the year, you know, to up their knowledge, whether it be with the MMAA or the finance committee for this, you know, the finance council for the entire state. I can't even go to my final seminar in June where all the other accountants go because I don't have enough money in my budget. Because I pay to go to school, I have to buy 1099 forms, and I can maybe buy a few pencils and that's pretty much all I got. I'm, I'm the only department in this entire town that does not have $1,000 in their expense budget. So I thought we reduced our independent audit, it's still a level funded budget, I just moved some of those funds into my expense line. To be able to capitalize in those seminars and classes that, you know, we should be taking to, you know, get us as better employees.
There are separate expenses, the independent audit is because, isn't that because we have a three-year or whatever contract? And we get incentivized by having a more than a one-year contract?
It was a agreement, correct.
Right, right, so I wouldn't put them together, really. It's not because, you know, one thing got freed up. The freed up is $1,000, you know, of the voters. So, I mean, I think it's totally legitimate if you need the expenses and you can document the need for the education, but I don't think it should be that we're not filling gaps.
I see where you're going.
Documented need is, yeah, there's enough.
So it's for the educational purpose, for you and the assistant accountant?
Well, it's just really for me, but.
Any other questions on that? Okay, thanks, Vicki. Counting software support was 36, requested 38, went to 37.
Difference?
Yeah. Principal assessor, looks like it stays the same. Assessor admin goes up to 2%. Pardon me? Okay. Assessor expense, it stayed the same. Software support went up. Is it safe to assume on the assessors that's just an increase in the software support? Okay, thanks. Town maps stayed the same. Consultants stayed the same. Where are we?
They're right here, assessors.
So inspections stayed the same, treasurer collector salary, I'm assuming it's 2%. Same with the wages. Expenses stayed the same.
Well, wait a second, I, I mean, I do have just a quick, just a quick question. I mean, if 2% of $50,000 is under $1,000, how is 2% of $57,000? I'm just, wait, we're going 2% off of
Yep.
almost $50,000 and 2% off of almost $52,000? How come there's a $4,000 difference between the two? That doesn't.
This was for the water, was this the water department one? Yeah, this is the water department, I remember they talked about it last week where we're getting reimbursed. It's a pass-through of the money, am I correct on that, Vicki? Water department's paying us more to do more work, so it's a pass-through on the budget, it's coming through on the revenue side?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, just asking.
Shouldn't that be logged differently then?
It's because it's not 2% that I just wanted to point that out.
The operating budget if it's coming in. in from a enterprise fund, right?
It is part of the operating budget.
It is? I thought it's from the water department.
Right, so the water department, we, we calculated indirect costs to the enterprise funds, and that comes into the revenue stream as another funding source. So it's still calculated as part of that.
Okay. Thanks.
Software support, safe to assume that's an increase in the actual cost of the software support? Yeah, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Legal expenses, we're staying level. Tax title, level. Salary, looks like that 2%.
Yep.
Assistant wages, same. Expenses going up $500, town clerk expenses. Anybody want to question that one, no?
I mean, it's worth asking why. I mean, we asked Vicky the same question, and she had a good answer for it.
Okay, do we know?
Just out of fairness, I mean, if we don't have an answer, if we don't have an answer for it, then I don't, I don't think we should be just blindly, I mean.
I know the town clerk was looking to attend additional trainings and seminars.
Yeah, they gave us the detail, but I can't, in the dark, I can't see it.
I know, I can't read it.
So if you want to put that as a question, we can always have her let us know. Do you want to find out more about it?
I'm o, I'm o, I mean, I, I trust Ed.
Okay. So election wages, the same. Election expenses, actually, it went down from last year, but it was requested to go down, so we're good there.
Concom expenses, we, I mean, we kind of discussed this.
Nothing there, no planning board expenses. PVPC going up $38. Barnes-Aquifer, because there's no more Barnes-Aquifer committee.
Doesn't exist.
We have the savings. PAG programming, it's going up $70,000, but again, that's the pass-through, because we're getting $70,000 from charter. Ed, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it's going up $35,000, but it's a, it's a pass-through on the revenue side.
Right. Hampshire Council and Governments are giving us a pass this year on dues, so we're saving that money this year. Custodial wages, it looks like 2% again. Telephone, the same.
Could I just go back and ask about the custodian? Is that still a shared expense between police, library, and town hall?
We pay separately.
Yeah, okay. Right, but it's in your different budgets, but is it the same person?
It is the same person, yes.
They split it out so it'd be fair on the budgets.
Mm-hmm.
Gas and electric town hall, that's just based on experience, Ed, so it's a small increase. Building expenses, the same. Town reports, the same. Technology, the same. Technology services is going up $3,000.
And that is my main request to improve, so that we can actually have a support contract with an IT vendor for the year.
Will we have that for that increase?
We should, yes.
So the email system might not crash?
Actually, my, my first goal is to get the IT vendor. My second goal is to be off of the current email host by October and have it with the IT, through the IT vendor.
Okay, thank you. Emergency management, staying the same. Reverse 9/11, staying the same. Now we're into public safety. Chief salary, looks like it's a 2%. Department wages, from 630 to 642, it's 2% unless somebody tells me different.
Yeah, it is, it looks like it.
Incentive, have a 2% on it, too. Overtime, 2%. Okay. Department expenses is level-funded. Equipment maintenance, level-funded. Lockup, level-funded. Building expense, level-funded. And custodial wages, looks like 2%. Communication wages, 2%.
2%.
Expenses, the same. Fire chief salary, 2%. administrative aid, wait a minute, says zero for 19, they requested 20,000, and zero is funded, so no, no aid. Fire department wages, 2%. Expenses went up 4,000. Okay, what was that for?
Yep.
Anybody have a?
Can you read your notes?
See here.
Here.
Unless we get a good explanation for this, because we're, because we're also doing turnout gear, I mean, we're doing, I mean.
They're not missing where they are here. These are elsewhere.
I don't, I don't. I'm going to have to go.
Fire department, so we're looking at.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, because it's between the expense accounts.
My memory is that Chief Fortman moved some of his numbers around, that it was in total for his budget, it was a total of a $4,000 request for an increase.
The police don't have an increase in their expense line.
If you look at building expenses there, it's decreased by 1,000.
But the fire chief's budget in total is level-funded. He, he didn't need as much money in standby, so he took the money out of standby, put it into some building, put into some equipment, so the total should be level-funded. His budget in total is level-funded.
So which ones were less, Vicky?
Well, you can see, so if you're looking up here, you got, you got $13,000 less.
Yeah, his standby was 18.
1,000 over here.
No explanation.
This is 1,000, sorry. So you dropped money down on building expenses. He reduced by 1,000, and then he reduced EMT standby wages by 12,000, so he saved, he saved 13.
Right, it's plus.
However.
The 2%.
Yes.
I don't see that.
What do you mean?
Right hand side.
Well. So last year, he requested $18,250 for standby, and this year, he's looking for $6250.
Yeah, but if you add up all the pluses and you look at the minuses, the pluses outweigh the minus.
Sure, I think, well, I think, yes, so that's true, but I think what Vicky's trying to, I'm not, I'm just making arguments here, but the two, you can't factor in the 2% increase, because the police got that, too.
Yeah, the 2%, you can't.
She's, she's factoring in, and you can't factor in EMT wages, so she's factoring in the increase in $9,000 for turnout gear, plus the $4,000 increase in expenses, so a total of $13,000.
Minus 1,000.
That overlaid with the minus 1,000 in building expenses that he's reduced, and minus $12,000 in EMT, I'm assuming that's standby wages, is that correct? So he's, and then the other stuff is separate, because that's, that's the COLA.
You're right.
That's the 2% that we're, that we're looking at.
Is the $9,000, is that different from what we already heard today from the Capitol?
Yeah, so I, I can speak to this, because I'm on the Capitol Committee. So we, we, this turnout gear is, it's, I believe it's around four full fire uniforms, I guess would be the right way to put it, but it's, it's outfitting a firefighter with the appropriate gear to, to fight a fire. We, since we have so many part-timers on our department, this equipment is good for 10 years by, by, by law, so it has to be replaced every 10 years. And the chief has, has come in and described to us where he basically is on a cycle with this, where he's replacing four fire uniforms, is what I'm going to call them, per year. That's the cost to do it. If he doesn't do it, he gets behind, and then he can't replace them cyclically, so he's, so they're aging.
But the question I asked is, the $9,000 here, we also heard from Capitol Committee about an additional, that's my question.
Which I was going to get to, because we didn't do it last year, see? So $3,000 is not even, basically is one of the four that he needs, and so we didn't do it. So that's the, where the 9,000 is coming from, and now we're just trying to, to correct that wrong, so we don't keep doing it out of Capitol. Because this is a recurring expense that's done on a, on a cycle, and this is, this is according to the chief, so I'm not, I'm just, I'm basically regurgitating the information that I was, that I was told, and I do remember hearing this last year.
The piece of equipment, one is backtracking.
One is backtracking for this year, and the, and this is to correct the issue going forward, so that we don't get capitally behind, basically, with this. But I.
No, I think you've got it.
I like what he's done here, in that it's, you know, it's basically, it's a 2%, it's factoring in the 2% COLA, and he's balanced it out, he's found the money somewhere else.
Yeah, and that's what the department head needs to do.
Yeah.
Okay, so, fire department, we're all set. Let's just go past that, if we can.
Yep, so we're down here.
Building inspector salary, looks like that's a 2%. Can you roll it?
Whoa, 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 wait a sec, wait, sorry, I'm sorry, I'll go up here. There we go, okay.
Expenses are the same, alternate is the same, gas plumbing is the same, and e-permitting software is the same, okay. Now we're going into education. So, the elementary school, Norris, last year was 4456304. Obviously, they requested 469700, and it was reduced to 4529915, which is an increase of $160,785, which is less by whatever, $75,000 than they requested.
Wait, so this is the number, this doesn't, something doesn't, something doesn't add, because it's an.
It should be only 73. AL, wait, go back to, go back to column AN first, I can find that.
A what?
AN, yeah.
Give the formula, AL.
Yeah, this, this, these columns aren't adding correctly, because the.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
It's an increase from this year, not a decrease. We're not going down.
Well, 4456 to 529.
It should be AL minus AH. No, AL minus AM, yeah.
Let me just, let me just do this.
AL minus AM.
Yeah.
This is AH.
AL minus, that's AL minus AH, and this is AL minus AH. I don't get why this isn't working.
AN, not AH.
AN.
AL minus AA, AN.
AN or AM.
AM go up from here.
Yeah, AL minus AM. AL minus AM.
Right.
Put the right, next column over.
With this column.
I don't know what that is.
It's AL minus AH.
So it's the request minus the override.
Right. Yeah, but that's not what we're doing up here, is it?
AL is the request.
Okay, yeah. And then, but this one, it's not the right one. This one's not the right one.
Yeah, that one.
That one's AM minus, AM minus AH.
That should be.
Yeah, this one should be AM minus AH. I'm just going to copy this, this cell here.
Yeah.
Come down here, paste.
Yeah, that should be.
It's so much easier to balance the budget when you just change the numbers.
So that's AM minus AH.
So it's LA, 3,000.
Yeah, so then I should be carrying this.
Why did they not copy? They checked all the totals. Maybe you didn't see. His computers were kind of wired today.
Sure.
Let me just confirm this, because we've been doing this, so let me just, so this is, I'm just going to go up to here. So this is AM minus AH, so AM is right here, which is level-funded, and it's minus AH, which is our budget. So it is the difference between the two, which shows the difference between the two budgets, so, so that's, that's what we're doing here, so AM minus AH, AM minus AH, AM minus AH.
There you go.
And then this is, this should be the sum of that, and it is, okay. So here we are.
Okay, so we're back to, they requested more than they were given, they were given $161,000 roughly, and they requested roughly $74,000 more than that. Okay, questions on that, or Erin was back there? Is she still there?
Yeah.
Is that anything you want to comment on, Erin?
I mean, it's going to be the reduction of staff.
I think it should come up and discuss this.
Everybody can hear.
Yeah, 73, that's the COLA, with the, with the COLA, it's going to be a reduction of probably 2 and 1/2, if we can do 2 and 1/2, I don't know. I mean, it's the equivalent of about 2 and 1/2 staff.
Well, I guess, because a lot of the teachers make around 68 to 70,000, but that's at the higher end, so a newer teacher, roughly, what do they make?
It could be, it depends, but it could be mid-40s to mid-50s, I don't know, it depends where they are.
So 1, 1 and 1/2 to 2, maybe?
Well, no, I mean, you're, there's, it's going to, it would be.
Well, your difference is right here, 160 grand. I mean, if you do that by 50, that's.
You have to understand, we have to, we have to do, the kids have to go out of district, so we have those costs regardless, so we're going to have to make it up in sal, in staff.
Okay.
Staff cuts, so we have to pay those expenses regardless, so.
Now, this isn't jeopardizing the language-based program.
Oh, yeah, there will be no language-based program. Yeah, there will be no language-based program, and the equivalent of two positions, or somewhere around there, 2 and 1/2, so.
We should probably back up, in case, I mean, people are probably still with us, it's, it's only 8:00 PM, so I'm sure that, while we're struggling up here, I'm sure that plenty are listening and want to hear this. And so it, Erin, if you, if you will, I mean, just back up and, and explain this more fully in that the reason why there would be cut, like, it's probably hard for people to understand, And so, Erin, if you, if you will, I mean, just back up and explain this more fully, in that, um, the reason why there would be cut, like, it's probably hard for people to understand, they see an increase in wages, they see an increase in transportation, and they, well, they do see an increase in vocational tuition, but I think it's worth just explaining the, you know, the variables that change that are out of our control, based on the choices that families make, and how that affects the school and its budget, and what's specifically potentially happening next year, and why these increases would result in fairly drastic personnel cuts to the school.
So let me go back, in your request for 4690, that would have been-
Language-based.
Same level of staff and the language-based program.
Correct.
So for $73,000?
The language-based program-
You can't have it.
The language-based program in itself is $120,000.
Okay.
So, um, you have to, that has to be, so we, right now, have three kids that are out of district, that happened this year. We have three more kids that are on the horizon, that without a language-based program will go out of district. So we have six kids that will be going out of district next year.
And that's costing us?
About $50,000 a kid.
How much, I'm sorry, I can't-
Somewhere between 40 and 60,000 dollars a kid.
So you're talking $240,000?
Correct.
Versus $73,000?
No, you're-
No, but I mean, plus the difference that you have in here, yeah.
So we have, wait, what are you asking me? What did you ask?
I'm, I'm trying to figure out how much is it.
The 234 included, included regular, it was just the staff as it is today, plus the $120,000, because we weren't, because we were gonna keep the kids in, right?
Right.
So then, when we had to take out the whole language-based program, we had to take the whole language-based program, so reduce 120,000, and then add back in the, and add back in 120,000 to send the kids out. And then we have to, then that's just the cola for the staff, but you understand, we have to still send the kids out, so the staff has to be reduced in order to, to make that happen.
And so if we, again, come back to the argument, if we, if we did start the program here, we would have them, this year in school, not have that out-of-district expense, next year, we won't have the out-of-district expense, and this, the program, our investment now will start to pay back.
Right.
If they approve the program.
Who?
If the people that are just making decisions around out-of-district placement.
Yeah, I mean, I think that you could, the school can make a good case if that they have a program to offer, right now, we have nothing, so there is no case you can make.
Okay, so the budget that's here is above net school spending?
I, I, yeah, that has to do with Smith, too, so I don't know the net school spending number, maybe like 6 million, I don't think we're in, because there's almost a million for Smith, so I don't think we're in jeopardy of that.
And do you know whether, what the per-people expenditure in this budget is?
No, it's, we're, no, I don't, I don't have that calculated, they don't come out with those numbers until after the, the school year's over, so.
This is kind of short-sighted on our part.
It is, but, I mean, I under, it definitely is, I understand where the select board is, because you also have a limited amount of means.
But it gets us through this year, but it doesn't improve our situation for next year or the year after.
Right, and so, and conceivably, these kids are going up to regional, too, so, um, it just continues.
Yeah.
So.
Making much sense.
I don't know if you have any other questions?
Well, can we mark this line and see where we end up when we get to the bottom, if we end up with any more money?
Yeah, I mean, so basically, so what we're, what we're losing here, oh, just, let's get through here. I mean, this, this department's looking at some, looking at cuts in personnel and not shoring up a system that, I mean, my, here's my, my, I guess my sadness is probably the right word with this, in that, um, what we're losing is a couple of teachers, which, which I, I mean, I don't think is equitable with the other departments, and then I also think that, or I know, we're not getting the language-based program, which is frankly, the reason, it's really the root reason on why we're losing teachers, right, because we're using those dollars for the students that are electing to go to out-of-district schools, because we don't have the programs in place to be able to teach them, um, we are, that's costing us at our own school in the form of teachers, and so, I think the most, I think the, if you really just boil this down, it's, we are utilizing a significant amount of dollars to spend at schools that, that affect, basically, I mean, you're talking about a handful of Southampton individuals, and those dollars are not being spent on townspeople, towns, departments, they're being spent at, at school districts that are, that are outside of town.
Also recognize that your tuition, your, I mean, that your transportation is going up for these kids, too.
Of course, yeah, for, for, I mean, that doesn't, that's not-
You have to absorb that, too.
Those, each of those dollars, if you, if you divided that by the population in a town, or the people that utilize the school, I mean, you're just looking at, you're looking at less than 1%, those dollars are, are not affecting anybody in town, really, and it's a massive sum of money.
Erin, can I ask you a quick-
Why does transportation go up so high?
Because you have to pay to bus them out.
Okay, so that reflects the out-of-district placement?
Those were two, two extra ones, yeah.
And the process will continue, it's gonna continue to cascade, I mean, what I wish we could, I mean, look, I wish we could par out some of these numbers, because the numbers are climbing in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for-
I just want to ask one quick question, if we were to set the language-based program in play, would we realize any revenue from that, from other communities coming in, so we don't show that here, though?
We can't do it now, though, you have to have the program up and running for probably two years, for then it to be a valid program, that we can then go to people and say, we have this program running, it's been documented for two, two years, now do you, will you send to us, and it would be mostly our in-district, so we'd go to West Hampton, or Williamsburg, anybody who has similar kids, but we, it wouldn't, it would happen, it would happen down the road, but we can't-
So year one and two are out.
Yeah, you can't, because you have to show that it's been up, right now, quite frankly, we have such a need in Southampton, it would be full of Southampton kids right now.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have it right now, it will eventually, and I think once we can start to provide the right, the right tools to these children, I think that, that you're gonna see less and less that need it, but right now, there's so many that have been so far behind for so long, that, that's what's happening.
I want to find a way to stop this, because, and I want to try to do it this year, personally, because this problem compounds, it gets, it goes up to Hampshire, and then we absorb 50% of that, because these, these, it's not like these kids eventually come back, they're increasing in numbers on going out, and when they go out in our elementary school, we pay the direct 100% cost of that, because we don't have the programs required, um, in our own town to support it, and then, they continue, you know, it, this is just, this passes on to Hampshire Regional, it's not like those kids are returning to Hampshire Regional.
Well, and quite frankly, White Oak just came out with, it looks like a, it's like a information video to try to get parents, to try to pull people to come to their school, like, they're trying to really, I've never seen anything like it, was sent around to me, it's like, come to our great school, and it's only your town that has to pay it, like, it's, they're really, really going after families, like-
Yeah, so when you think about this, if someone at the second grade level, who needs to be placed in a language-based program, and we end up sending them out of district, potentially, we're liable for, for that expense for the next 10 years of that student, if it never, if the child never returns to the regular education, it really is very short-sighted for us not to try to, to take care of our own kids at our own district, and ultimately, we'll realize the savings, I mean, just, we can just do the math.
I think we should flag this line.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, so, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion in a second, but I want to, I want to listen to these, these two people.
Can I say something on that particular item, or do you want to say something for that?
I'm gonna speak to that as well.
Okay, no, you go.
Introduce yourself, because we're kind of blacked out, so people may not see you.
John LeBree, Finance Committee, well, I'm in full support of, of supporting this, of funding this, it was a tough choice, we just had no money. But one thing that we did learn, just, this is strictly informational, and not, I'm trying to beat this down, but, um, strictly informational, if you do start this program at the Norris School, it does not guarantee that these students have to go to that class, they can still leave, so you could pay this on both ends of the spectrum.
It's the parent's choice of where they go, if, as I understand.
It's not, it's not just a parent's choice, you have an advocate, you have a principal, you have a special ed director, you're all in these meetings. If you, right now, you're in the meetings, I have a son who has special needs, you sit in a meeting and you say, my kid, you can't service my kid, and right now, the principal says, yeah, you're right, we can't service your kid, like, we don't have a program. When she has tools and has a program, that's a whole different story, when you can show you have the tools to give a language-based program, it makes it a lot harder for an advocate or somebody to make the case that they have to be sent out, so there's not 100%, but I have to say, the like, the likability of it happening is a lot, a lot less.
But technically, I think you had said, if the advocate and the parent says, we don't care, we want to go out, they have the right to do that?
It, you have to show all these things, so you have to show that, that right, that they aren't meeting it, this is why they're not meeting it, they don't have this program, there's all these things you have to do. When you have no program in place, it's a lot easier to show all those things, so, it's an automatic, you're right, we don't have it.
Okay, but I mean, they could still opt out, but it's a-
It's a final decision.
Stronger case we have, the better chance we got.
It's not like, it's not like, you can't, you come in as a parent and you can make a case, but if the school can make a case why your kid stays in, then it, then they can't just be sent out on the town's responsibility. It's not like the parent can just come in and say, you're sending my kid out, there has to be this proven, the thing is, is that when they've come in with advocates in the past, because the advocates know all the laws, and because there is no program at Norris, then they get it, so, I mean-
So we stand a strong chance of keeping them.
I'm just saying you have a strong chance, I'm not saying everybody would be stopped, but you're, you're talking a lot stronger, and, and a case for that, especially-
What do you think the possibilities are of drawing people back in that have already sent their kids out?
The ones that are out right now, the three, I would say zero. Um, I, the two that are, the two or three that are on the cusp of going out, I think we can stop them.
Okay.
Confidently, I think we can stop them, so.
I, I agree with Erin, I just, was just making that statement as a point that you could be taking a gamble, the gamble, I think the odds are in your favor if you do roll the dice on that, so. But I, I agree with Erin on that.
And if you favor the language-based program, instead of, and then end up losing teachers, you're gonna lose school choice students, too.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
Marty Larson, David Street, a member of Hampshire Regional School Committee, I want to give a practical example of how this worked at Hampshire Regional. Several years ago, we started investing in teachers for our autism program, and we, special ed teachers, training, special programs, and over the course of those years, since Principal Smitty has been at the helm, we've become a magnet for children with autism, and we've been able to keep kids, now, it is true that a parent can still decide to send their child elsewhere. However, those parents are not only looking at the quality of the program, they're looking at the quality of their child's life, and if their child has to be on a bus, going a half an hour, 45 minutes, one, you know, in, in a, in a bus or in a van, you know, those are things that parents take into consideration, I would say that that's, yeah. So, and that, that's certainly what we found at, at the regional, and so we're starting to keep more kids, and sometimes, those particular kids do stay with us a little bit longer, so it is possible that, you know, a child could stay in the system longer, too, that we would continue to pay for.
Makes sense, so we should highlight this in-
Well, I actually, I mean, I want to go one step further, and I don't, I don't know if you guys agree, but I want to try to fund this at the fiscal year 20 request, which is technically the level funding request plus 2%, if I'm not mistaken, Erin, is that correct? That would be, that would, yeah, plus the, plus the language program, but basically, it preserve, it preserves, it preserves the service, and it stopgaps the, the massive losses that we're taking, I mean, we're spending money on, we're throwing money away, I mean, this is a-
So you want to add 73611 to that line item, is what you're saying?
I want to fund it at the request level.
Which was the original request?
Which, 73611, right?
Which is $160,000.
Which is the difference between $160,000 and 73, so, yeah, so 90.
No, uh, right now, we're, John, Finance Committee is gonna say they funded a 4529915, right? So if we go back to the request at 4690700, that's $160,785 more.
Whoa, okay.
So we have to come up with the-
But it's $90,000 more than they already have, they've already funded it at 73.
Excuse me, one second, um, I believe now, if-
I'm sorry.
Maybe Vicky can help me out with this.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The, the transportation cost, I believe, goes down about, what, 30,000?
Twenty.
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, if you-
Put the language-based program in.
Put the language-based program in, so that could save you something there as well.
Yep, but we're going down the list here, but, but my, you know, I move to, to support-
I'm just showing there's a save, there'll be savings there.
And I appreciate that, because I, I was, I was, I was thinking of that as well, um, as we kind of go down the list here, and I don't know if the vocational number changes either. But, like we've done up above, I'm gonna make a motion to, to fund this request at the full amount, and I realize that we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to look more deeply into this.
I'll second it.
Okay, so, so for discussion, let's just make sure we know what we're doing here, because once we have a motion and a second, and it passes, we've got to make up the difference between 160 and the 20,000, that's $140,785, you're gonna take out of other departments along the way?
We're gonna get through the budget, and we're gonna discuss that.
No, you're making a motion.
My preference would be that we come back to it, we flag this line.
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have, you still have to have a balanced budget, so, if you're gonna increase this by 120,000.
140, but-
So-
You would have to either-
Can you explain me the, um, the difference?
You'd either have to deduct that from other areas and other departments.
Or increase your revenue.
Or, or, yeah, which, we can't do, or look for an over it.
Could we?
Difference, the difference here is-
Can you walk through the-
Yeah, it's another $160,000, is that what you were saying?
Minus the 20,000.
Minus the 20?
So it's 140.
140,785, it would net out.
John, what, what if we go to vocational tuition and bump that down a little bit closer to the 860?
Yeah.
Get another 40 there.
Well, let's, let's think of this, are we bumping it down artificially?
No, I'm just matching the last year's number, I'm just holding it.
Yeah, I mean, the, the reason why I'm doing this, because we did it up above, and we haven't gotten through the rest of the budget, I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily want to flag this.
Well, let's stop and think here, they asked for 143, or 100, whatever it is, $170,000 more for their vocational tuition, there's a reason for that.
Well, they didn't ask for, I thought they just used the number of kids accepted by the dollar value per student.
But the request is 1,030.
All right.
So, the request, what they submitted for the budget with the 1,030, 173, 52, is approximately 53 students, 22 of which are freshmen. And there's two kids that go to Westfield Voc that are, I think, sophomores and juniors, maybe. The, the per pupil cost is set by the state, is $17,956 per student to go to Smith Vocational. Now, we budget $2,500 for special education, there's 23 kids, out of those 53, I think there's actually 54 now, because they accepted up to April 1st. That, so there's like $54,000 for the sped cost, now, in previous years, Smith used to charge us 4,310 bucks per student, and that was it, flat cost. Now, they've gone to a services-based sped cost, but we can only gauge on an average of what each one has cost throughout the year. So the school business administrator will budget it at 2,500, it has, in past history, come through a little bit less, not a ton less, but it has come through less. But we don't know what those services will be once those kids, you know, go through the year. Now, the 900 is reflective of past, past history has shown us that probably seven to 10 kids haven't gone, and I know of two kids on that list that got accepted that aren't going regardless, so, but that's why we put it down to 900.
So you feel 900 is a safe number based on past history?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the key. Yeah.
Now, Rini asked a question earlier about net school spending, if you take the level funded plus the 2% and the Smith Voc number, and the charter school that we get assessed on our cherry sheet, and our school of choice that we get assessed on our cherry sheet, minus the charter school tuition that we receive and indirect costs, that total is about $130,000 over net school spending, which isn't huge, but it's kind of the, we're kind of at the bare minimum, so.
So if we left at 900, it would be fine, in your, based on past history?
Yeah, because if, if what happens is, is you get, you know, there's 22 freshmen, and, you know, 19 of them go, we will have to put more money in at the end of the year at some point.
Vicky, do you know, based on the service, the special ed versus the flat rate, is there a possibility that it would actually be more?
No, it's less.
It'll be less.
Yeah, because if you're talking 23 kids at 4,310 bucks, that was it, versus an, like, we just budget averaged at $2,500. So last year, we paid maybe 30, and we budgeted like 50, somewhere around there, so it's, it is less. But, but the tuition for Westfield Voc is like $12,000, which is less, but their sped costs, we don't have any sped kids in there, is like almost $7,000, so.
Are we still paying transportation for both of them, we were only paying for one at one point?
We are paying, um, the transportation for, I think there's that one van that goes, so they all get on that one van. Which saved us money, because in 18, we were paying 82,000 and some cha, $82,000 and some change for those kids.
One of the Westfield Voc kids is a senior.
Yeah, he's a senior this year, so there's still two.
So maybe not even, not even getting a ride, then, and they're both in a program that is not offered at Smith, right?
Correct. No?
Is that that aerospace program or something?
Aeronautical, something or other.
Okay, but regardless, that's, that's okay.
Anyway, so that's why the number's at like nine.
We don't need to go there.
There's a little bit of wiggle room in case, but-
So, let's bring this back in, we've got a motion and a second to fund the elementary school at the requested level, but before we take a vote on that, remember, once we take this vote, we're committed, like Ed says, as we go down, to decrease other departments to the tune of $140,000, so, my suggestion would be is we remove the, the motion and the second.
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not ready to do that just yet, because I have a couple of other questions before, before we do that, and they're for Erin and Vicky.
On this topic?
Yeah, on this topic, yeah, of course, um, and my questions are this, why, local school transportation, why, and I'm naive to this, but why can't that number stay at $210,000 next year, why does that have to go up?
Vicky Morrow, Town Accountant, Palmer Meadow Road, because we are in negotiating a new contract.
And it's gonna go up 120 grand?
Well, 20 of it is for, for that one, for that one, for those out-of-place districts.
So it's still 100,000.
So it's still about 100,000.
So he's got a point there, because-
This is insane, I mean-
So, no, it's also, it's the contract that went out, and it's also the kids that are already out of districts that we have to pay for, there's $75,000 is for those out of district, not even including the 20 that we'd have to add if we don't have the language-based program. So that, we're already paying for the two, remember the two that went out mid-year this year?
Mm-hmm.
So those, that's, now we have to pay a full year of them going out.
Yeah, for 75,000 bucks.
In addition to the increase in the contract.
Okay, so-
That's not negotiable, like, none of that in there.
So that's under local school transportation versus the Voc transportation?
Yeah, correct, yeah. Because we had a five-year contract, and it's up, and they renegotiated that piece.
Did I answer that question?
Why did it, why is it 331,000?
But I'm just gonna-
And then now 102?
Yeah, something's not adding correctly here.
It says fiscal year 20, level funded plus 2%, local school transportation, does that say 331,000?
Yeah, so it was 209, the request was 311, because that's the contract, and the $75,000 for the kids who are out of district. But then the level funded at 2% is increased by 20, because you level funded the Norris School, and you have to add another $20,000 to that transportation line, to take those kids who are gonna be out of, in not in that language-based program, we have to send them out, we have to add another 20 grand on there.
So that's why we're crediting against the 160.
Yes, so if you put the language-based program in, you can take the 20 out of the transportation.
Yep, and then vocational school tuition, that wouldn't change?
We're leaving at 900.
Erin, do you, I mean, is, this is the way we always budget for this? Vocational tuition, because that seems like a hard number to estimate, which you explained before, but I just want to make sure we're doing the same thing that we always do.
Yes, so in, maybe about five years ago, um, you know, you're talking almost, you know, $800,000, because the tuition has gone up since then, but we found that over the years, you know, seven to 10 kids weren't actually going that were accepted. So, we banked on budgeting having seven to 10 kids not go, even though they've been accepted, and they can decide up until the first day of school, whether they're going to attend or not, so, that's kind of been the history, and that's why I took that down.
Okay, so.
So you get the money upfront, in hopes that the history has proven that we've taken seven to 10 kids that haven't gone there.
Best guess.
Yeah, it's a gamble.
We've had a lot of feedback about the Hampshire Regional, but do you want, is it okay to just talk about the Hampshire Regional?
Yeah, of course, because it's part of the picture, yeah.
Well, it's not part of the motion, though, it's not part of the motion. It's not part of the motion, so we gotta settle this motion here.
Well, John, I can also say this, um, if we vote on this and it, and we do increase that number, and we get to the bottom line, we can always go back and amend it.
Of course.
Yeah, we just.
That's what we did up above.
If we put that number in now, at least we have something we're working towards, and we get to the bottom, if it doesn't work, we have to reamend it.
Yeah, which is exactly what we did above when we made that motion.
That's all.
I personally think it's backwards, but we got five votes and that's what we'll do.
Yeah.
Okay, any other thoughts on that before we take a vote? Okay, so the motion is to fund the elementary school at the four-six-nine-zero-seven-hundred number versus the four-five-two-nine-nine-one-five number. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye, so, three-two. Okay.
I'd like to come back to it instead.
Yeah, I, I agree. We're not against it, it's just how we're gonna do it.
Yeah, we have to go back to it if we don't get there.
Yeah. Okay, so, we're down to Hampshire Regional Operating. That was.
Didn't change the transportation on that, if we're gonna do that.
Yeah, twenty thousand, Matt.
So I should reduce this to?
Three eleven.
Three eleven, seven-two-five?
Okay.
Yep.
You wanna go to the right on that?
Yeah, and then I'm gonna do minus two-zero-zero-zero.
But you gotta put.
What's that? Am I okay?
Now, can we just take a quick peek at the end? What's our delta? What are we off by? If we go to the bottom of this chart, shouldn't it say?
What was the, what's the delta here?
Ooh.
Do we remember? It should be just, that should be easy to find, hold on.
It was like one forty-something, wasn't it?
One sixty, one sixty.
Yeah, okay, that's right.
So that we have.
I was taking the twenty and adding it to it, so.
Can I find it?
Yeah.
One sixty-seven-eight-five.
Okay, thank you.
One sixty-seven-eight-five.
Yep.
Okay, now, what do you wanna do?
Well, just go to the bottom, what are we off by? How much over budget are we right now? Just seeing where we are.
Yeah, I'd say about a hundred and forty thousand, Jim.
Well, we had some money, we saved above a little bit here.
Yeah, it's only been, we haven't really saved much here.
We made changes prior to this a little bit.
Not many.
So is that our variance right there?
One thirty-six?
One thirty-six?
One thirty-six, that's what we're off by.
Yeah, cause you took the five away, fifty-two hundred bucks.
Correct, I'm just looking for that just delta, that's all.
You gotta go back up to.
So can you explain to me again why the twenty thousand dollar difference in transportation, even if nothing else has changed? Why do we not need twenty thousand dollars?
He's for the language-based children going out of.
Oh, but that'll have to change again if we decide, okay, alright.
The one thirty-six.
Okay, so Hampshire Regional Operating, this was the budget that was voted on by the Hampshire Regional School Committee, a couple meetings ago, right, Margaret? And so, it's, it is what it is, it goes to the town meeting, and the town gets to say, yes, we agree, or no, we don't agree, and if two or four out of five towns, is that right? Four out of five towns say no, they don't agree, it goes back to the school committee.
Well, not four out of five, all it takes is two towns.
Two towns.
Two towns.
Two out of five say no, it goes back to the school committee for a re-look, and they don't necessarily have to decrease it, they could send it back and say, no, we need it, but the idea is to decrease if the towns don't approve it.
Well, it's not, it's not normally just two towns, it's because Southampton has a weighted vote, is that correct? So it's Southampton and one more town.
You're correct, yeah, Southampton, one other town.
Yeah.
And this is about a two and a half percent increase, is that about right?
So that's still two towns.
Right, but I mean, like, if two small towns voted down and we vote at four, it, it could carry.
Yeah.
Is that right, Margaret? One?
No, that's wrong.
I think it's two towns total.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I miss, I'm confused.
No, that's okay. Margaret Larson, David Street. The weighted vote comes in when you're speaking about votes on school committee. So when we voted for this budget, which there was quite a bit of conversation, this was not the budget that the principal wanted, this was less than what she wanted, and Southampton had a weighted vote in that. When it comes to towns voting, every vote counts equally.
Okay.
So, so it could be Williamsburg and Goshen, it could be, you know, so.
So four out of five have to approve it, or two out of five have to disapprove it, if you wanna go that direction, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And the difference of one twenty-eight, um, is about two and a half percent, is that what you said?
Two, two.
And the original request was about four point.
Three, three-something, three, three, half percent.
Yeah, there was a four-point something.
There was a, it started out at four.
Revenue.
Yep.
The, the one twenty-eight oh ninety-one is, call it, level funded because of lack of, uh.
Revenue was reduced, yeah.
Revenue, so they, they have the same money as last year, um, but it's an increase because of lack of revenue.
Cause the revenue went down, we have to pay that as our share, uh, which is about fifty-five percent, so the other towns share another hundred and twenty thousand or something like that.
So I wanna bring up a, a difficult topic to discuss, but are we, if this were to get voted down, that's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, the delta in our budget's a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, so it brings us pretty close. My question is, is how, how do you plan for this one way or the other? And, and maybe that's a question for Ed, but like, this stuff comes out so late in the game, that, let, let's say we hypothetically say that this gets voted down, what happens to that hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars? And where do we real, and where could we reallocate it? Or could we pendingly reallocate it if it, you know, on a hypothetical?
Oh, just.
Does that make sense? Am I, am I making sense here?
Well, just because we turn it down, and if another town turns it down, doesn't mean they're gonna decrease it by a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
I, I get that, I understand that, but I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out if there's additional savings to be had there by the towns, how does, how does that work?
John Labrie, Finance Committee, um, what happens is if it gets voted down by the two towns, it goes back to the school committee. They don't necessarily have to come up, it doesn't mean it's gonna come up at zero.
Sure.
It could come up half that, and whatever, and there would have to be a special town meeting at that point to vote on it again, which.
And then what? Do we, would we re-vote on our own budget, given that that, this would clearly affect it?
You could decide at that point during that same special town meeting what to do with that money at the same time, knowing what you have.
Yeah, we could fund the school, say Norris School, if that's what your question is.
Right, right.
But we won't know till then.
Right, but, but the, there is another meeting scheduled, ten, right? I believe for the twenty, twenty-third, among the five towns of the regional, and I, I know the, the committee passed it, so this is the budget that's being put forward to the towns. But there may be some discussion at that meeting that, uh, this budget may in fact change before it goes before the towns for voting, if there's an indication, um, resulting from, from that meeting that, um, it needs to be pared down. I don't, I don't know that, I'm just keeping that there, so that we have it kind of as a placeholder, uh, because it might be resolved before it gets to town committee.
So let me, let me.
Or town meeting.
See if I understand that. So you're saying when the five towns meet, and, tend to be next week, that if all the towns say, we wanna reduce this budget.
Right.
It's actually gotta go back to the school committee.
Right.
And they can reduce it, but they can't increase it, and I don't know that they would vote to reduce it now versus waiting to see what the town.
To see if it gets voted down.
I can't tell, yeah. But we can't reduce it just because the towns want to reduce it.
No, I know, it, it stays the way it is for now.
Yeah. Okay, so, right now, it is, it is what it is, can't do anything.
Okay.
So let's go forward. Public works, uh, salary, two percent, highway admin, two percent, wages, two percent. Expenses the same, expense, road machine, same, billing expenses, the same.
Storm water.
So that's the MS four storm water that increases thirty-five next year.
And so, I just wanna bring this up, Ed, we had a conversation offline about this, but I, I wanna just bring it up, cause I think the public needs to know. I, I had asked the question about, given that this is not, uh, a long-term, and by long-term, I realize that it's multi-year, but it's, it's a variable expense that changes across the years, it has an expiration date, you know, I had asked the question, like, do we need this in a, in a budgeted line item, um, as opposed to spending it out of, uh, operational stabilization, or, I guess it's not, really not capital, but, you know, one of those accounts, because it's, it's not a recurring budget item, and, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but basically, this is something that's a state mandate, and the thought was to put it in the budget, because it's not something we can necessarily not do. Is that, am I articulating your, summarizing what you said to me correctly?
Yeah, it's not anything that we really can't do in, in the future. Would I expect that there be some dollar amount in there in future years? Yes, you know, whether that's, you know, ten thousand dollars, whether that's thirty thousand dollars, again, uh, I'm not sure, but I, I think we will see it, whether it's, you know, in twenty-one, twenty-two, or twenty-three, so I, I think you'll see some amount in there in the future.
Yeah, but you know, this is an unusual expense, and it just seems like it sort of meets the letter of the purpose of operational stabilization.
That's, that's why I asked about it.
Instead of taking thirty-five thousand dollars out of some, somebody's budget, it seems like, what is the balance in operational stabilization if what we talked about tonight, um, gets approved?
Oh, if what we talked about gets approved? How do we do that, Matt?
There was three sixty-nine to start off with.
Three sixty-nine, yeah.
So there's money in the budget if we do it that way. Remember, that requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting, and if it doesn't pass, we gotta go back and take it from somewhere. That's the only issue.
I mean, free cash will still have a balance of forty-three thousand dollars.
There's a few articles, other articles of money.
But that includes it, I think, doesn't it?
No, it doesn't include the articles that I gave.
The town, well, please use.
No, but I gave some other articles to end, yes.
Oh, okay, so we haven't seen here?
That you haven't seen yet, there's one that came from free cash.
I'm with Ed, this is gonna be with us for several years anyways.
But, John Labrie, Finance Committee, we did ask the question, um, that you got, that Rini and Matt had brought up during the finance meeting, and it was, the way it was told to me was that this is gonna be an ongoing year after year, and it is probably going to increase.
Yeah, it's going, it, it is, it is.
So that's why we figured it should be budgeted, but if it's something that's gonna die out after the next few years, then by all means, it'd be great to spend, get the money.
Well, I, my understanding is a four-year, it's a four-year thing. That's what I remember hearing from Randall when he came up and presented it to us, and the costs are variable.
I don't know that, if that's the case, then I don't see why not taking it from someplace else.
That's, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to get at.
But if, but if it's gonna be ongoing year after year forever, then, then it's gotta be part of the budget.
Ed, do you know what the duration is, uh, finite duration?
And that's what I remember for.
For, for the other remnants, whether it was Niptys or anything for this, uh, once you were into it, it kept going. It wasn't like it was three years, four years, five years, you were, there were, there were different things you would either have to do permit-wise, mapping-wise, or then.
How much?
Three hundred. Operational-wise. So, I, I don't, I don't see this, I don't see this going away, and that's why some communities have basically adopted a stormwater fee to pay for it.
See, that, I mean, that's, you know, and respectfully, that's not how I remember it when Randall presented it. I, I remember it being a four to five-year, uh, very specific, uh, run rate on this, you know, this isn't, this isn't like guesswork here, like, they're not serving us with something that they're just gonna keep taking and taking and taking, they, they have a set schedule for this, and I remember him presenting on that. And, and just to go one step further here, and I get that, Vicky, that we haven't discussed some of the articles, but with regard to the responsibilities of the capital committee, which Charlie presented on, um. The balance, not including the additional items that seem to have been added on to op-stabilization, there would be a balance of about three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in that account, not including the additional items, which I'm not sure how big those are, but that's a, that's a serious sum of money, and that's exactly what this is.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, we're not gonna get anywhere, cause we got different opinions. Ed, is there a possibility you can get, give Randall a call or a text and ask him the duration? Cause once we know, we'll know, we can go from there.
One of the things you have to remember, if we keep depleting, like, we have a hundred and eighty-five in our capital, or a hundred and eighty-six, and we take it all, we take money out of free cash, we're gonna take money out of sable, um, operating stabilization, that's gonna affect if they're gonna let us borrow any money. They're gonna say, oh, you keep, you're just gonna spend whatever you have, it affects the bond rating, it affects how Jen can borrow money, because they're gonna look at us and say, oh, you just spend all the money that you have, you don't save any money for things that are coming down the road. Not to say that we shouldn't take it out of there, but that's pieces that happen.
Sure, and I understand that.
So I'm just pointing that out.
And historically, you know, and I'm, and I'm in total agreement with you, Vicky, but also historically, we've used operating stabilization to prop up legitimate budget items that are ongoing, that we see in our budget right now, and this is not one of them. This is not.
Correct.
To me, this is not a long-term expense.
We shouldn't be doing that at all.
This is not longer than five years, this is not a, this is, and this is a very variable budget item, whereas in the, in the past, frankly, as, as early as last year, I recall, we were using op-stabilization to prop up literally budgeted items.
Yeah, and I'm not disagreeing with you, we shouldn't do that either, but at the same time, I'm just pointing that out, that that affects how other things work.
This is thirty-five thousand dollars that can go to the bottom line on, for resources that we, that we need.
Okay, so Ed's trying to get ahold of Randall, so let's continue on until we get an answer, then we can come back to it, okay? So, winter road wages, two percent, uh, road expenses, level, street lighting is level, cemetery commission, are my expenses, level, tree warden, level. Okay, uh, health director is going up, uh, twenty-three thousand or so?
Yeah, so, let me, let's.
Yeah, I know that's been a.
Yep.
Topic to talk about. So who wants to start that one?
I'll, I'll start it, since I've seemed to have started everything else.
You're the lead.
Yeah, and I'm the liaison too. Let me start off by saying that I'm obviously in full support of complying with all laws that this country has and has enacted, and that includes equal pay for equal work, and wage laws, et cetera, that we've, that we've discussed with regard to this. With, with that being said, I, I still think we can comply with, with all of the laws that we need to, with regard to this department, and level fund it off of last year. And that would be 32,858 and 11,677. And I think that, and I think that the Board of Health has to figure out how they, how they want to allocate those resources.
Didn't we vote at the special town meeting to increase that 32,8, and it was two different, two different articles, and one of them passed and one of them didn't?
Right.
Yeah.
So what is that number truly at right now?
That's for the rest of FY '19.
Yeah, that doesn't factor in the decisions that we need to make this year.
But I want to see where she is. What, what number is she at right now? That's all, I'm just wondering.
Uh, yeah, I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion that, just like every other salary, that it's level funded with a 2%.
Ccola. I second that.
So we're open discussion stage, and hopefully Vicki has some information for us. What is her number now?
37,859.
So we added $5,000.
Yeah, which the board is able to allocate within their, within their budget.
And that, that got us in compliance for the rest of '19, is that correct?
Didn't get us into compliance, it just, your wages for the end of the year.
Yeah. Yeah, we said we would deal with it during this.
Well, wait a minute, can you explain what compliance is? Because it is debatable whether or not there is equity between these positions. The amount of certifications, testing, all of that for the building inspector position, I don't think it's apples and apples, frankly.
So, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, I believe Ed conferred with town council and came up with a percentage to what these two were together.
What he came up with is a dollars per hour, not a total salary, number of hours or anything like that.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, so, so if you were looking to reduce that, you would be theoretically, specifically reducing the number of hours of that position.
Well, potentially, unless the board, unless the Board of Health decides to allocate resources differently within that department. Correct?
You mean combined positions or something?
Well, for example.
Yeah, yeah, for example, yeah.
So I have a motion, was there a second?
I seconded it.
And the motion was to keep it level funded at the 32?
Same as every other one.
Same as everyone, except with the addition of 2%.
Okay, so that would leave it at 11,66, which would be with the 2% cola, the 3,000, and the 3,000. Okay, so the motion in the second is to take the fiscal year '19 override budget, add 2% to the wage component, and put that in the 20, level funded, plus two, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
So 32,858.86 plus 2% is 33,000. I'm sorry. It's 33,516.04.
Okay, so there's a decrease of how much from what we had in there before? Because you want to add that to the right-hand column? Remember that number?
Well, it's going to be the difference, 54,7, unless I'm wrong, it's the difference between 54,7, 22, 30, and the number, and the present number, is that correct?
Vicki, did you, did you have over in the 50 or 20 plus 2%, the 57,722 number, or 54,7, 722?
It was 55,816.75.
55,186.
55,816.75.
So 55,816.75.
Minus 560, minus 33,560.
33,516.84.
So minus 22,299.91.
So 20, about 23,000, okay. Okay, let's go back.
And health agent is that, that's the 2%?
We left it all the same, that, everything that would be right.
Oh, yeah, all right, that is, yeah.
Oh, okay, no. So we go on to the Sharps, well, Sharps program is, okay, that's the same. Mosquito control, we never did that. Animal inspector.
Mosquito control is in Article 4.
Right. Now, animal inspector salary, why didn't that have 2%?
That should have 2%.
Yeah, it should be 2%.
Uh, okay.
Six, was that $60?
Yeah.
So 3,060.
Right.
So that was kind of the question I asked, because the plumbing inspector and the electrical inspector, are they considered the same as the animal inspector?
No.
Why?
They get $40 per inspection.
Okay, so.
And the animal inspector gets.
So this is more salary, they're more contract?
They're, yes, they get $40 per inspection, based on what they've collected.
Excuse me.
Thanks.
Okay, council on aging, looks like the 2%, is that right?
Yeah.
Wages, same thing. Expenses, level. Veterans agent, 2%. Expenses, level. Okay, keep going, we're cranking now. Library wages, is that 2% Vicki? Okay, expenses, they've gone up.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Barbara, you'll have to, you'll have to go up here, sorry.
Sorry.
Barbara Golden, library director, the total is level funded. I just moved something from.
Did you move them around?
Utilities to expenses.
What are you going to use the extra money and expenses for?
We have nothing for education right now, for conferences, so it's going to go for that and some programming, which we also have no line item for.
Any questions for Barbara? Okay. Move right through there then, since she moved the lines around while set. Employee benefits, I don't think there's much we can say about these. These are all Vicki's inputted based on expe, oh, Jen's?
Jen's.
Okay, based on experience and what you know about the cost going up? Okay? Jen, you're going to have to go up to the.
I'm struck.
Right, I know.
You just have a microphone, you should pass around, right?
I know. Yeah, so the retirement contributory.
Have to introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry. Jennifer Day, treasurer collector.
Yes, okay.
The retirement contributory, that's set, that can't be changed. I think workers' comp and unemployment compensation, Ed determined those numbers.
Correct.
Group health, all the health insurance, I determined those numbers by what we paid in the past. I basically took the February payment, multiplied it by 12, and got a number, and then we usually will add on employees, add on a couple of plans, just to be safe for any new hires or anyone that decides to pick up the insurance. So, I'm looking at the numbers here. I mean, I don't.
So you extrapolated from the information you had?
Yeah, from the information that we had.
Any questions for Jen on those?
Yeah, I mean, we met and talked about going to an insurance carrier for short-term disability rather than, and we were going to look at what we've paid over the last few years in terms of 75% of people's salary. What number was that? Do you know? Because that always shows up in the salary line as opposed to.
Yeah, that doesn't show up there, that's not budgeted. That was, that hasn't been budgeted in the past. I believe that the number, though, on average, was about 18, was it like 18,000 a year?
I had sent that around to everybody, and.
Did you get it?
That was about 15, 18,000 dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think last time I looked into the plan, it was around 10 or 11,000. So it might have some savings there, and it's guaranteed and it's administered.
But Fran seems right, the 26 weeks is out of the salary line because it's just normal payroll. It's just if you have to backfill for that staff member.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So does that mean we're not discussing it any further? I mean, I know this isn't the place, but is the conversation dead on this, or we still going to explore it?
Like I say, I had emailed that information along and.
Did everybody get that information?
Didn't hear, didn't hear back.
I didn't get it. I didn't get it.
I didn't get that information.
Could you?
Can you resend it?
I can resend it.
Sure, thanks, because we want to keep on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's something that's just still being looked into, right? I mean, there's no.
Because when we met, you, you had estimated we were already like at 23,000 or something like that for this year alone, so, but you're saying over the last several years, you just averaged it, and it was, because some years we're going to make out on it, and some years we're not.
Yeah, there was one year there was only like 3,000, I mean, then most of the years were around 18,000, so it, I mean, it just depends, you can't really say.
What you can do, if, if, if you decide, just throwing this idea out there, you can make a line item budget, which we did for the van driver, because we put it in a separate line item for the FRTA, and, and you could budget that amount, and if no one uses it, it goes back to our free cash. But if you budget that amount, and no one uses it from the insurance side, we still pay that 15 grand out, and we don't get any money back. You know, so if you separate that, if, if we still want to continue with that 75%, you know, you put in 15 grand, for, for lack of a better number, and that's where you pay those people out of that specific line item, and then you can tell how much you spend, you don't have to have Jen go through the rig and roll of trying to figure out who was out when, and looking at papers and stuff, and that way, if you don't use it, you get it back.
So it's like self-insuring.
True, but if you pay 15 or 18 grand for the insurance and no one uses it, that's money out of our budget.
That's the way, you know, go ahead.
No, you were saying it was like 10 or 11,000.
Yeah.
Well, whatever it might be, but still, if you use, you pay that 10 or 11 grand, and this was the one year we don't pay anything, we're out 10 or 11 grand. I don't know, I'm just throwing that idea out there.
Yeah, but if you average four years, the last four years, we're out $24,000, or 32,000.
We can make employees pay for their own disability insurance, which I've done in all the other companies I've ever worked for, right? Pennies on the dollar.
That's a different, different topic.
This is a discussion, I'm just throwing it out there because the town hall budget, if you want, right? But I will do that.
But no, you're right, different topic, though, for a different time, but thanks, thanks Jen. Okay, let's go to OPEB. Debt has gone down to $1,000 from 9,500. You've explained that before, Vicki, so I don't necessarily think we want to go through that, the savings. Debt, okay, we've, we're not going to go through that, that's just our, our debt service. So debt service, interest, you can go past that, Matt. Revenue projections, variance, so we're down to, what, 113,000?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we started at 140 for the school, we made some changes, decreased a little. Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I'd like to revisit the MS4 stormwater, and just to take it one step forward with this, what I'm not suggesting is that this doesn't eventually become potentially a budgeted line item. I mean, I'm happy to look at that, say, next year, but I think for the purposes of this year, that amount of money should be coming out of operational stabilization, because I feel like that's what it is, and I think that gets us a lot closer to where we need to be by doing that.
Ed, did you get a hold of Randall by chance? Did he say anything?
No, he's on vacation, and he's in the Smoky Mountains, so he may not even have service.
I love it, that's awesome.
I, I agree with Matt.
We don't know whether it's one year, four years, or 10 years, so I guess we have to go on our intuition on this one.
And we have to fund it, I agree with Matt on that one, I think. Fund it a different way and use that money towards the program that's going to pay off in a couple of years, I think, it's wise money spent.
Yeah, I, I think it's kind of smoke and mirrors where we're doing it from, but, you know.
We're trying to get there.
So we need a motion of some sort in order to either, if you want to change it, otherwise it stays like it is.
I'll make a motion that we take the $35,000 for the stormwater, is it M4 expensive?
MS4 stormwater.
$35,000 from operational stabilization, or we put that in front of the voters as opposed to the operating budget.
I'll second.
Put it as an article on the town warrant.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that.
And I'll second.
We got a second over here from Matt. So any discussion on that?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Back in the budget, if people vote no?
We have to, and I want to say no, because I think it's a line item that stays in here, so four to one. Yeah, again, if we go to town meeting and they vote it down, we're going to have to cut some things somewhere, but it's a chance. So as of now, that's a $35,000 savings. So going down to the bottom line, I think that brings you down to about $88,000 that we need to find. So, folks, how do you want to find $88,000? Or do you want to go back and revisit the Norris budget? Because we've got to do one of those too, or both of those. Anybody have any suggestions?
I don't know, I haven't got the exact number.
I think it's about 88,000, but yeah, he can scroll down to it. Yeah, 78.
Seventy-eight.
That was fuzzy math you had.
That was nine o'clock math in my head.
Yep. So 78,000, put the streetlights off for 26.
Yeah, it's 78 out of a 17 million dollar budget.
It's in a different line item agenda, but board really hasn't voted on a cola yet. I can't go into any detail what we've talked about in executive session negotiation with the unions or what have you, but I know there's been some discussion that 2% wasn't that number. So are you comfortable with the 2%? And I'll just tell you, if that number, if it wasn't 2%, if it was one and a half, that's about a $12,000 difference.
Okay. So what Ed's suggesting is that we take the 2% and put it down to 1.5%.
No, I'm just kind of suggesting that.
Well, that's, that's a suggestion.
That cola needs to be kind of finalized at least. If 2% is it, it's 2%.
I agree. So is there a comfort level of adjusting that to 1.5%?
I feel bad that, they got zero last year.
Yeah.
So I don't, I'm not comfortable with.
I'm not either comfortable with that.
I'm not comfortable with it either.
Not comfortable with changing?
With changing it, they didn't, people didn't get raises last year, I think it's very moralizing.
And the non-union people still aren't going to get as much as the union people, because the union people will get retro. So if, say it's 2%, they'll get retro from this year, and they'll get next year, where the non-union people.
We're not able to talk about the contracts.
You know what I mean, I'm just saying in general, it's.
Well, you're assuming that.
Well, I'm assuming that because that's how it normally works.
Not able to talk about the contracts.
Yeah.
It's how the contract's negotiated, Vicki, so we can't say that be accurate. So, okay, so leave it at 2%. We're still at that 78,000 number. Want to scroll through there and come up with thoughts?
I know you're, you're playing with fire, but I keep going back to the Smith School. Can you get 10,000 on that 900, go down to 890? I mean, it's.
Transportation costs.
It just.
I mean, we're trying to find, now, at this point, we're trying to find what I feel like is a very small amount of money.
Well, the thing to remember about vocational tuition is the tuition is 17.7 or 8.
17.9.
17.9. 40,000 is only like two and a quarter more students.
Yeah.
It's not a big variance with the fact that there were 22 that applied.
No, it's not, and, and you could, you could feasibly say even four with 22 that applied, I mean, really, like all 22 of the, like, do we have numbers on?
Vicki just said there are two people that you know.
Two people, but I know personally that aren't a 10, because that's part of that seven to 10 that you took out. They have up until August to decide, maybe before 2,000.
Well, we got to send the ones who don't take it, $3,000 or something.
Okay, so let's look at the other side. What happens if we fund it for X amount and we have more going? Where does that money come from then?
So this is the, this is the 17, 22.
Right, if we have more, we're going to have to find it.
Somewhere.
And allocate it at a special town meeting.
We got to be careful, I, I don't disagree with cutting the number, but we got to be careful how much. We don't want to cut it just to make up a difference.
And then the transportation number would change as a result of that too, correct, or not?
No.
No.
Would not.
One bus.
One bus.
And it goes just from here, I mean, that goes from the Norris to Smith, right?
You said 17 students times 17,000? I mean, that's a lot less than the figure there, right? What else is in there?
What, the 90?
Yeah.
The 900?
Yeah.
There's also $54,000 for special ed, and then there's.
Special ed, but what, special ed for what? For vocational special ed?
Yes.
Which is students that require special.
Correct.
Ed that go to vocational.
23 students, yes.
So would that number is different than 17,000?
Correct.
So how much is that per student?
That's 2,500 dollars budget per 23 kids.
So you're looking at 20,000, 20,000.
But not every kid that goes there is special ed.
No, there's 23 kids that go there that need special ed for the left.
So it's in addition to the 17,000, you add 2,500 if they're classified as, as special ed?
So 54,000.
Well, what's 54?
The 54,000 is the special ed for Smith vocational.
That's a ton of kids, a ton of kids.
22 times 17,000, add 54,000, it's still a lot less than 8, 900,000.
Where do you get the 22?
There's about 50.
You just said 22 students.
Enough.
New students.
There's like 54.
They're all special ed? Total.
They're all special, oh.
No, no, the 23 is amongst ninth grade through 12th grade. So it's 23 students total that go there. There's 54 students total.
23 are special ed?
23 are special ed.
23 out of those 54 are special ed at Smith Vocational, correct.
Of half of them.
Yeah. And then there's also the piece of Westfield Voke, which is like $23,000, 12 and 12, 25 or 28, yes.
Okay, so we're back to.
I got a five-minute break coming.
Could do that now.
Should we take a quick five-minute break?
I think we should.
Yeah.
Turn the lights, close your eyes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I mean, I think that's pretty sad. Because if it ends up that we can't, or they can't figure out actual money, they're going to be the only one that's going to cut you off.
We have a course.
Unless they, unless they don't.
We are hurt once.
Yeah. 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 So up here, Rini, if you could join us. Actually, where's Matt?
Yeah, yeah, we drove by.
Yeah, John, can you turn, dim the lights, please? Okay. Matt's not here, so. So we still have to make up, what, $78,000?
Can I ask a question? I was just talking to a couple of people. It seems to me that 53 students going to Voke School is over 12 people per grade. What is the history of the number of students? Because I still want to come back to, are we comfortable with reducing the Voke tuition at all?
Well, 54 kids, I think we said, 22 or 23 are special needs.
Oh, no, 22 are freshmen.
22 are freshmen, 23 are sped kids.
Oh, okay.
So last year, the original budget, I think, was 52 or 53 kids, and there's 42 kids going there now, which part of the, then there's two kids we only pay half because they are between here and Chesterfield, or here and Goshen, or here in another district.
So we drafted about 10 children.
Correct.
Okay. So we're budgeting for 54 again this year?
No, we're budgeting less. The million, the million.
Matt, can you?
Oh, a million.
School, the school, yeah. There you go.
Yeah, so a million 30 is the 53, or 54 at Smith, and the two at Westfield.
So it is 54 we're budgeting for.
No, that's the million 30 is the 54 kids.
So 900,000.
900,000 is a comfortable estimate of, I mean, I don't know, you can make it whatever you want.
But it's not the 42 that are going currently. That would be a lot less.
No. I mean, the freshman class, the 22, is larger than it has been. So I hesitated to say, oh, well, let's take all this money away, because if you have those 22 kids and even half of them go, then you're kind of stuck, but.
So how much, how many students does that represent, the difference in the dollar amount? And does anybody know the last five years, the number of students that have gone to Smith Voke?
We're always taking about 10% back. So there's always been about 10% that we haven't paid.
10% dollar amount or 10%?
In the budget.
There's always about 10% over budget?
We under, for the last five years, so this happened five years ago, because what happens is that it all went against Norris. So we made a case five years ago at Norris that about, we'd had history that about 10% of the budget doesn't end up getting spent. And so to give it, to give it towards Norris and not hold on to it because you can't make a budget with that. And so that historically, which is what she's showing, is about 100,000, is about 10% savings of what, who actually goes versus what the total number is. So that's what she's doing.
10% is.
Do you know where?
Up front.
Correct, that's what we started five years ago.
But do you know where your budget ends up? Like, where did we end up on the 860?
We said, I think we thought we're getting about 30, is that right? 30 or 40,000 back? If everything is the way it is, we think so? Yes, yes. Something about, something around 30 or 40,000 is not going to be spent at Smith that was budgeted last year.
That's pretty close.
So, yeah, yeah, so the 900 is a good, I would say, yeah, but the 860, it was like 980 or something, or 960 last year that.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't bring that.
That was the number, if we had done the full number that they wanted. But we didn't. We did the 860, and then we're actually now going to be 30,000 less than that.
Because the sped number is budgeted at 2,500, and it has potentially come back.
Right.
20 grand less, but I don't know that until they bill us at the end of the year.
So we've already cut off $40,000 from this figure, right?
So let me ask this, Aaron, if we went back to the 860 to make up that 40,000 to put it up above in the Norris School, would that be a comfort level for you, or would it not be? I think that's the question.
So I don't, that's, I don't know there, I don't know the numbers, like, I don't, so I don't know where we are right now. I was.
But if we're going to be 30,000 less than 860 right now at the end of this year, that's a good indicator that if we put 860 again, we could be right in the same neighborhood, as long as things stayed the same, right? It's a crapshoot.
It is a crapshoot. We could.
There's no difference, but 20.
We could. He wants to split it in half.
20, I mean, that's another 20 off. It gets you one more student. I mean, we're only gambling one student at that point.
Well, we're coming at.
I don't know enough about the numbers.
Actual year-to-date, we'll be.
Right, so if I go, we go from the 900 down to 880.
So if you did 860.
Yeah.
And you took out the money for the sped, 2,500 times 23 is 57.5. 2,500 plus, I think it's 24,000, is 81.5, so 860 minus 81.5. Equals 78,500, 78,500. Five by 17, 56.
Is that about 100,000?
That would leave you with 43 students.
Basically what we have now.
So if you were to keep, if you were to put 860 in there.
Vicki, you should probably talk a little bit on that.
If you were to keep the 860 and level fund it, you'd end up with potent, you know, about 43 students.
And that's basically who we have, what we have now, right?
We have that many students now, yes.
Okay. So that would be the status quo if people have a comfort level. I mean, we're playing with fire a little bit, but.
I'd like to go halfway. I'm still not that comfortable with it, actually.
Right. So why don't we have, make a motion, and we'll see where it goes.
I'll make a motion that we fund that at 880.
Versus 900?
Second.
Okay. So any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Hosed? So unanimous? So that's another $20,000, so we're down to $58,000 we need to find.
And the other, the other option here is, we got it within 58, we go back up, and that's what the school has to work with. Maybe they can do something there, I don't know. I mean, we tried our hardest to get to the full number, and if we end up short by a little bit, maybe they can still work it.
If that's what you want to do, you need to make a motion to decrease the 4697.
I'm not, I'm not there yet, I don't think.
Well, but if somebody else wants to make a motion.
That's true, true.
We have to consider it. You want to make that a motion, Jim?
Not yet.
Okay.
A little wait, just a little bit. If he has, if he has any ideas, I'm listening, I'm listening.
Okay, so 58,000.
One of the things we haven't looked at is the other end of it, is what we anticipate is revenue. I know there's something here in the budget, but is that, is that, that's the best we can do?
Yeah, that's even pushing it, I think.
Okay.
We sort of cheat on that end, though, yeah.
Yeah, we have it.
How about legal expenses, Ed?
I would not go below 30,000.
Why? Where are we at right now?
We're at 30.
I know we have a history. I'm well aware of the history. I'm just wondering where we are.
Take him out of the speed dial, the lawyer.
Street lighting, we've done that in the past.
That's a safety issue, though. I agree. I'm just bringing it up.
We've done it before. It's not to say they can't come back on.
So then if you take the street lighting off, you have to include, increase the police presence because.
Yeah.
Are there any items on here that anybody recommends for being funded elsewhere? Capital or green communities?
We don't have any capital left.
CPC, CPA fund? You have a list, don't you, Virginia, of things here that could be funded by CPA?
So legal expense year-to-date, which doesn't include the warrant Joyce is currently working on, we spent $15,395.41, which I think is only through February. I think you just must have given us March.
Yes.
Yes. So that's through February.
There's some outstanding ones. I don't know how much.
So.
That's about halfway through.
A little more than halfway.
For the money.
Don't they have to review all the articles for town war, of the media?
Yeah, there's still some money.
And remember, we're looking at.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just telling you what they spent.
Yep, yep, I think that's right.
And they don't ever get them right, but.
So scroll down slowly.
All right, let's start, we'll start at the top here. Move it where?
Out of the field, just.
Up a little?
No, no, not that, your cursor.
Mouse cursor.
Oh, my mouse cursor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there you go, okay.
Yeah, you're welcome, sorry.
Well, it's not only if the override didn't go through.
Correct.
And it went through, so it didn't.
Postage-wise, how close are we right now year-to-date?
We have a new score here.
We spent $8,745.57.
87.
$8,700, but I don't know what you have left. May bills?
Yeah, so I know, like, you run for the next one, I'll be 2,000 to the, to the reserve fund. And we have May bills, and then.
Okay, so.
Oh, you already mailed them.
You know, what was, I know what we budgeted last year, but what was the expense last year?
Well, we want to know year-to-date expense and just extrapolate from there.
Well, I'm just, well, I'm just wondering what we spent the year before, even though we budgeted this number.
Well, let me go get my expenses.
Then you'll know.
Yeah, that'd be great.
It'll be very similar.
So why don't we continue while she's getting that?
Oh, I'll just highlight this.
And then just keep in mind that there was a 10% increase in postage about a month ago.
That's right.
I'll just write it down.
So, yeah, we'll just back to that.
Oh, line 16, yeah.
We'll have to raise it.
Postage question, okay.
We're going backwards.
Okay. Yeah. So keep going.
Wait a minute, I got $200 for expenses on finance committee.
Another 10 grand, you got the reserve fund, you got the reserve fund which.
Yeah, I thought we already did that.
We already did that, John.
5,000.
Yeah, we got it for 5.
I think you're suggesting we could eliminate it entirely.
It's still 5, is what I'm getting at, and then you have another 5 at ConCom.
And isn't there, isn't there an article on ConCom too? Or is that not, or is that not an article?
Well, it's an article that actually used cutting of.
So wouldn't that be a double funding source of a pass?
No, not.
We don't see any income from that for years.
Exactly. It's not a windfall.
You're saying eliminate the reserve fund, because you haven't spent any of it this year, have you?
We did spend about 21, 22,000.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yeah.
But what that means is if anybody has an issue, they got to work it out themselves within their own budget. So if you're, you want to take.
I'm just putting out ideas, I'm just.
So that might be a good idea to get 5,000?
Yeah, I mean, we can flag it. I'll write it down.
You want to, you want to make a motion, somebody to do that?
Well, let's, why don't we, why don't we do what we're doing here? I mean, we highlighted postage, which is a question mark, and Vicki's, Vicki went to go get that. Reserve fund with a question mark. ConCom with a question mark.
Well, no. Well, John, though, being in the chair, he's offering that up.
Yeah.
Taking advantage of it, I think.
Oh, okay, well, that, that's fine.
Well, I would go down to, I'll leave 500. I'll leave something in there.
But, but Jim, $500 isn't going to help a department.
Francine's saying 25. I mean, I wouldn't cut it to zero. I think leaving something in there makes sense, but I'm willing to take some of that.
Well, the thing is, by having nothing in there makes the departments responsible for their budgets. In the past, it was at 50,000 one time, and it's gone down, and John says they've only used 21,000 this year, and that's just lately because it wasn't touched for a while.
That was a.
Yeah, but you could also say it was, the money's been reallocated appropriately to the departments.
That's what I think.
So that, so you wouldn't, so you don't need it? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I'm saying they're managing their budgets well, and so the reserve fund has meant less and less over the years. Because like I said, one time it was 50,000.
Yeah.
Somebody wants to make a motion, we reduce that to zero or whatever number, we can entertain it.
I'll make a motion to reduce it down to $0.
Is there a second? I'll second it for discussion.
The reserve fund.
So it's got a first and a second. So anybody want to have another discussion on that, or just go to a vote?
Well, I don't think we should go to zero, but, okay, well.
So.
Well, do you, I mean, since we're, we haven't voted, do you want to, what, what, what would you be comfortable with? What are you comfortable with?
I'd at least leave a thousand in there. I, I just, I don't know, but that's.
It won't serve the purpose that was originally created or suggested tonight, which is that it would be used for building expenses, a thousand dollars is not going to take care of it. So it would have to be a reconsideration of the use of the funds, right?
Okay, I think, yeah, that makes sense.
Want to take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is to decrease it to zero?
Yeah.
Correct.
Can someone just explain a little bit more about what the historical use of this fund has been?
We can't now, because we got a vote in motion, so. So we've got two ayes.
Obstain.
Obstain, anybody else? Aye, no?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed?
Aye.
So three, one, and oh. Okay. Yeah, that's. So we're down to.
I'm abstaining.
Yep, three, one, and oh, yeah. No, I'm, I'm sorry.
Three, one, and one.
Three, one, and one. Thank you. So we're down to fifty-three thousand.
The other question I could, I mean, I wish Vicki was here. The other question I would ask, oh, maybe I can ask one.
Yeah. Ten, three, eight, four, and change.
Really?
Yeah.
So why? The budget was five thousand?
No, no, it was ten, three, eight, four, and change. Originally, we cut it.
So now it's, so now it's.
So you got to put five thousand dollars back, right?
What, you remember what the change was?
It just went to zero.
They just took five thousand.
Yeah, so it is negative ten, three, eight, four.
So no reserve fund?
No reserve fund.
Okay, we're down to fifty-three thousand, let's go, continue?
Well, Vicki, can I ask?
Did Vicki come back with the posters?
So postage, we spent fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixteen bucks last year.
Fourteen what?
In bulk, wait, bulk rate went up?
So we're, we're right on target there.
Yeah.
Ten percent, went up a nickel.
Nickel, got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have we done anything around.
Yeah, I can't touch that.
Making it all automated or moving to in that direction?
Making what?
People pay their bills online, people pay, you know, like dog registration, taxes, water bills. Are we any closer to having, reducing this postage?
No, this is for sending stuff out. We send our bills out.
Right. I mean, is there a way that can be done electronically, is what I'm asking?
We still, I think.
Yeah, legally, if, if somebody is willing to give you their email address, you can, but other than that, you can't just mandate it.
But if people that own multiple properties, all their bills in one.
We do do that.
Yeah, I know when I get my excise tax, I get a bunch of them in one.
Well, water bills go all separate from real estate.
Water is separate from.
You can't put both those in one bill. Oh, oh, oh.
Hold on, hold on, hold, hold on, we can't, we can't have the conversation going out there. Let's, let's continue on, we're still looking for fifty-three thousand.
Can I ask a quick question to Vicki?
Sure.
Can you tell us last year, looking at this budget. Where any big chunks of free cash came from that maybe we have over budgeted and didn't use?
Well, there was one left.
You're going to have to go back up there, Vicki.
Okay.
Yep, that's a possibility.
I mean, so there were. You know, a hundred dollars here, a thousand dollars here, but it wasn't, the only big piece was winter road expenses. Even though we transferred money in, we didn't spend all the money that we transferred in, so we really didn't gain anything from that. No, so in total, at the end of eighteen, this doesn't include any encumbrances, for the end of the year, there was sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars left. Then I had encumbered funds for purchase orders the school had, you know, for different items that people had given me invoices for, or they had ordered. So that probably got cut in half. So there was virtually nothing left last year. So, you know, you're talking a hundred bucks here, a hundred bucks here, two hundred bucks here, wasn't anything that was.
Yeah, okay. Just had to ask.
No, that's a good question.
Okay, so let's go down slowly again, another shot at looking at this.
Keep going?
Yeah, keep going. Let somebody see something and hollers out, we're going to assume. Nowhere to cut.
When we added the thirty-five thousand dollars of the stormwater to the operation, operational stabilization. What does that figure give us now? Do you know offhand?
You mean, what are we still looking for?
It's over, still going to be over three hundred grand, right, Vicki?
Yeah, so you take.
Three sixty-nine.
Three sixty-nine, you're taking twenty away for the, for the roof.
Twenty-four.
Oh, it's twenty, that was twenty-four, the twenty was the capital.
Another thirty-five.
Minus thirty-five. Yeah, three-ten, two-sixty-eight.
And you said that you have to be cautious, because, well, the Department of Revenue made some very strong recommendations to something up in years back about not using. Certain funds to balance the budget.
Correct.
And at what point do you feel that it would negatively impact our bond rating?
I, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know what that, what that number would be. I mean, they look at it as a total. But even if you're. So whether you take the money out and you say, I want to use this to balance the budget, and you use that as another funding source in your revenue stream, or you use it to piecemeal things that we need in the budget, you're still doing the same thing. Using it when you really shouldn't be.
Right, but there are expenses that we incur that are not annual operating expenses, so the computers.
Yes, yes, I, I don't disagree, I don't disagree with you there, but.
So there could be.
But throughout the year, when we vote for stuff at town meetings.
We have, historically, but I don't think we're doing that this year.
Yeah, we're not using free cash and saying, oh, let's use that free cash and just add it to the school budget. I'm saying, is there anything in the current budget which is not an annual expense, a one-time thing that's not common. That we might be able to say justifies the use of operational stabilization. I know it means the voters have to prove it, there's a time delay and all that, but, I don't know, we're just trying to.
I don't think there's anything in this budget besides the stormwater that you can actually just take out of there. Because it's, these are, I think these are items that. Every year, we.
All right.
We consistently need them.
Here, we can move.
You have to go up to, up there, sure.
Back on the, sorry, Margaret Larson, Nine David's School Committee. So back in the education portion for the transportation line item. So at this point, Hampshire Regional is using its van to provide transportation for NORAH students and vocational students. We charge thirty-five dollars a day for that, so the principal and I were just texting about this, and she would like to suggest that we not charge for that this year. That there be some kind of an exemption for that.
So she wants to increase?
No, it's the vocational transportation line, the sixty-five thousand dollar one.
Right. So, so this was about sixty-three hundred dollars or something, I think, we charged. Yeah, for this year, so that could possibly be taken off. This would, this would have to be voted at school committee. And we would have to offer this to other towns, maybe on a rotating basis, so it would be a one-year exemption, but it would be a way to help the town. We're not counting this in the Hampshire Regional budget right now, because we can't count that as revenue. We don't know for sure that that's coming. Correct, correct. We count the savings that we have from the van, but not the revenue. So. So I don't know how that plays into it, but that, that is something that could, could save some. It was sixty-three hundred dollars that the town spent to that thirty-five dollars a day. Right.
I thought you were going to zero it out.
Oh, yeah. We can't do that, we, we, we're not in charge of that.
Okay, all right.
But you're saving five thousand in other places, I thought, well, six thousand.
That's great, that's wonderful.
But again, that, we can't count on that tonight, right?
Not tonight. She's willing to let me say something about it, but.
Can we reduce the local school transportation at all?
I, I'm still, like, totally hung up on a new contract costs us a hundred grand more.
Remember, there's seventy-five thousand dollars there, extra, that's.
Seventy-six thousand.
On a contract renewal, the thing went up thirty percent?
No, no, that's not what it's for.
What?
You want to re-explain that, Vicki?
So the three eleven, seven, twenty-five, you have to subtract the seventy-six thousand dollars, and then that would be the increase.
That would be the increase?
Yes.
Over one year? So it's just one year's thing? It's a three, what is it, three or five year?
I believe it's, last time it was five years, this year, I don't know, is it, did they give you the?
Yes, they gave me, gave me an article.
An article for five years, okay, because they did that last time, so.
Still a twenty, I mean, ten, fifteen.
There's only that one person who.
Bid on it. It's ridiculous.
Like bus company?
Yes, bus companies.
Why?
Liability?
We're too, we're too geographic.
Yeah.
There was two companies, but one company just voted on West Hampton.
Yes.
Yeah, so the same company.
That's a huge increase.
No, it's twenty, it's twenty-six thousand dollars on a two-hundred thousand dollar line item, so it's fifteen percent.
Two-point-five percent, I believe, plus the CPIU increase. So twenty-six thousand dollars on two-hundred thousand gets you roughly at two-point-five percent.
Twenty-six thousand dollars on two-hundred and nine?
Well, ten percent, no, it's less than that, actually.
Ten percent's twenty.
Right.
So it's twenty-six thousand is the increase, so it's closer to fifteen percent.
Close to fifteen, yeah.
I can't see in the dark.
I know.
So that's a fixed cost, contractually?
Do you know if this is actual, Margaret, based on the contract, because it just opened recently? Right?
The, the local?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, those are the numbers I got from Bobby, the school administrator.
New contract opened.
New contract, yes.
Okay, so it's right off the contract, then?
That was from the bids they opened, yes.
So we're basically around here.
Yeah, we're, we're scrolling for fifty-three.
Remind me again. Matt, the turnout gear for the bar department was half coming out of operational, half coming out of, what was the other line?
It was capital, wasn't it?
Capital?
Yeah.
Half coming out of oper, for the turnout gear?
Yeah. Retro was one and then.
It was nine thousand in each, I believe.
Nine thousand in the operating, and I think it was twelve thousand in the.
Was it twelve in capital?
Capital?
Yeah.
Yeah, twelve thousand in capital, and, no, the, the.
Capital was twelve.
Capital was twelve.
And the line item was, was it nine?
And the line item was increased nine, because it was originally three.
You know, another thing, John, I don't know if you remember this, we sign contracts for power, remember the cow power thing we signed? All these were supposed to lower our costs. Have you seen any? Any movement on the, that?
The lower electrical costs?
Yeah, remember, we signed those, it was substantial money.
Right.
Have we seen any lower costs, Vicki?
That's what I'm wondering.
Yes, we have, it's not as large as you'd like to think it would be. So. I don't know, I'd have to read through that contract. We do have a rate from Hampshire Council of Governments that Bob negotiated when he was here. For the usage. And the net metering credits. I have a spreadsheet upstairs that I was, I keep track of it every month to, you know, so we get like twenty percent discount. So we might get two-hundred and thirty-five dollars on the electric bill, but we pay two-hundred and ten bucks for the credits. So total year-to-date. And I haven't done the, the, you know, like February and March, it's like fifty-five hundred dollars we've saved total.
Okay, so, but we are.
And most of that belongs to the well.
To the well?
Yes.
So it sounds like we need to re, re-review those contracts to see if.
Well, we signed a very long contract.
That was twenty years.
Twenty years?
Yeah.
And I voted against it, by the way.
I'm just telling you, it was twen, and we.
I want to make sure you put that in the minutes, Kathy.
Yeah, it's twenty years, it's a long time.
Yeah, we did that in two thousand fifteen.
Because there was a guarantee.
Yeah, so that's what we want to check and see what the guarantee is.
Yeah, I want to make sure we've written that.
I mean, we're getting credits, but I, I guess I would have thought they would have been larger than they are.
Well, let's see what the guarantee says in the contract. If it says twenty percent less and we're getting ten percent, then we got an issue. So can you give that information to Ed?
I think you must have a copy.
I'll check my files.
I mean, I'm sure Heather kept, she had meticulous files, so I'm sure she kept it somewhere. If not, I have it upstairs.
Yeah, if you can get back to us, Ed, in the near future on that. Then we'll go from there. So guess what, we're still at fifty-three thousand.
We are. But we're honing in.
Well, we're fifty percent less.
Mm-hmm.
More than fifty percent less.
Keep scrolling.
We can get it under fifty.
Well, the thing is, before we leave, we've got to get it to zero.
We do.
Or give the, or give them less than a hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Right, but that'll get up to zero also. But the bottom line is, we got to bud, balance it.
Right, well, when we're done, and we go as far as we can, then we have to revote on the school budget, that's all, we put it where we can.
Yeah.
We just did that, so we put the number in there, so we can see that running total as we change.
What's telephone? Eight grand. Is that like a charter, I'm guessing? Just this flat rate? Is that all telephones?
It's Verizon.
Verizon.
Our lines.
For our lines.
Like every line in the town?
Building.
In this building?
Correct.
What about tel, okay.
About what?
Oh, I was just wondering if this is phones in fire, police, highway, town, library? It's just the town hall?
Yes, they all pay for the.
No, but it's eight thousand dollars for phones in the town hall?
It's five hundred bucks a month.
Is it? For a telephone?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of phones.
Because we each have one telephone line. We each have one phone number.
Can you share one phone in the whole town?
We have a different system, yeah. We did our workout, though. Yeah, very good, go upstairs.
Okay, gas and electric, I mean, those are basically staying where they are. Building expenses, keep going, Matt?
I mean, just to put the gas and electric, just town-wide, you know. Because I signed the warrants, the last time I looked at it, I added up the, the last month, and when I multiplied by twelve, we were spending town-wide about sixty thousand dollars a year. On, on gas and electric. It's, I mean, I wish we had a solar option, but that's not until sometime in the future, according to the capital plan.
So then that poses the question of, if people are going to use this building, should we charge them so that we can pay for electricity that they're using, right?
You're talking about outside groups?
Yeah.
I mean, the.
Just, I mean, it's not going to be a ton of money, but you're talking a couple hundred bucks, it might, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think, you know, I think Vicki's on to something, you know, I, I know people use the space in the library, people use the space here in town hall, outside groups. I mean, to ask for like a minimum donation or something like that, that could be used to offset, offset the expenses. I wouldn't be opposed to that, I don't know how everybody else feels, I'm not trying to nickel and dime, but you can see we're trying to, we're turning over rocks, trying to find. Money here, so that's, I mean, looking at the revenue side of things, that might be a way to, to, to pick up a few dollars.
Mm-hmm. How quickly can we do that?
We, we could put it on the revenue side quickly, but it's just, again, guesstimate of what we would bring in, but, I mean, if you charge a, you know, a not-for-profit group, like the choir practice, or whatever, whatever. You know, those folks don't have revenue either, so it's, yeah, they, they pay their taxes and they use the building, so it's a tough one.
I mean, but they paid to use the church when they were there.
Yeah, or did they?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Or even make it a voluntary thing, I think people would be willing to do that.
But that's probably going to get us pennies.
I know, I know, it could get us a thousand dollars or two thousand.
What's technology equipment? Is there an additional computer, computers? Because we're doing this, and I'm asking this because we're doing some of this in, in, out of capital.
Yeah, that's, that could be switches, printers, someone needs a, you know, monitors, dides, anything like that.
So Vicki, a year-to-date, what do we have on that line item?
Yeah, because, I mean, we got fifteen. Yeah, because, I mean, we got fifteen grand.
We can pick up a couple grand, you know?
And this one went up, three grand, three grand, this one right here.
So, technology equipment, year-to-date, we spent twenty-four hundred dollars?
How much?
Twenty-one hundred bucks for equipment.
On the equipment side?
Equipment, yes.
So, that's forty-four hundred dollars less than what we had budgeted.
And last year, we spent about forty-two hundred, but, I don't know.
We still got about two grand to replace a switch before the end of the fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
What about services?
Well, let's back up, if we've got two grand, we're still only at forty-two hundred, so that leaves about two thousand sitting there. I hate to go for pennies, but two thousand, two thousand. You think we can survive with that, with that switch and nothing else, Ed? For two months, it's only two months away.
Everything is getting more and more antiquated. I mean, we're trying to, we're finding problems with our email, and everything, and then we cut our basic IT services.
But that falls under services, right, the ninety-five hundred?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's why I'm trying to pair the two together to have the discussion about the two of them.
If we install a server also, the installation will come out of the services rather than the equipment, so, sometimes they're all tied together.
Well, and don't forget, that was a piece that was in our audit, that we addressed, that we were going to take care of, because we hadn't taken care of it over here, so, that's something I don't, I mean, I know it's two thousand bucks, but if that's something that we, as a community, feel strongly about, that we want to rectify that, that's been on our, on our report, then we need to keep those lines that way.
Can you go down to the bottom, where are we again? I mean, how, what's our number?
Uh, fifty-three, I think.
Yeah.
Fifty-three.
It's a question, Vicki, on the expenses, year-to-date. Uh, under Public Works and Facilities, it says storm, water permitting, twenty-seven thousand dollar and zero has been spent on that line.
Okay.
Yeah, we appropriated that at town meeting for the, the first portion of that contract with tying bonds, and I think they're just wrapping that up in order to send us a bill for that.
Why's it, Chief, the cursor's going in that area?
Any ideas, Chief?
Just keep it just like it is, please.
I think it's, it's almost ten o'clock. I think we got to go back and modify the number to balance the budget, and, uh, if anybody has any great idea between now and then, I'm willing to change it, but I don't see any. Short of conservation is five thousand, I don't think we should cut that.
I agree.
Shutting lights off, or twenty-six, I don't think that's, uh, I don't know, I don't see any other areas.
So, if that's the case, make a motion, Jim, and we'll see where it goes.
I'll make a motion that we modify the school budget to the new number that we came up with to balance the budget.
So, that's adding back in approximately fifty-three thousand?
No, minusing it from it. Or adding it into the budget, but minusing it from the school budget.
Right.
Taking it back from the school.
Okay, got that, Kathy? Is there a second on that for discussion?
I'll second it.
Can you just tell me what the difference is between the years for the school?
Yep.
What do you want to know?
What is the difference between what was the original budget of the school, and what is the current budget of the school?
Oh, uh, the orig.
Right there. So, they requested four-six-ninety-seven-hundred.
Go to the right more.
What do you want me to do?
Go to the right.
Go to the right, there. That one minus fifty-three.
Yeah, so, we're going to give them everything minus the fifty-three thousand. So, they requested, what, two-hundred-and-thirty-four, three-ninety-six? And we're going to give them roughly fifty-three thousand less than that, which is, what, one-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-three-ninety-six, somewhere around there?
I think we did pretty good.
Yeah, compared to, it's quite a bit. So, anybody have any other questions on this motion, or thoughts, or, otherwise, I'm going to take a vote.
I think, well, the short, the shortfall, if we, if we continue with this, the shortfall on their budget is going to be this number, the fifty-three, eight-five-nine, that's going to be their shortfall.
So, Erin, what does that do in terms of, I'm just thinking, if staff is going to have to be gone, then we need to increase our workman's comp. Because we're going to have to pay, I mean, not workman's comp, but unemployment, we're going to have to pay unemployment. More than eight thousand dollars that's in there.
Those are personnel things that can't be, I'm sure that they can't be discussed.
Yeah, I mean, I have to go back to Eliza, and say, what does this mean?
Yeah.
So, we haven't, we don't know that.
Yeah, we don't know, but I'm just saying, if it's a case of that someone gets cut, then we have to increase that other number, because, or you have to cut more peop.
It's not workman's comp.
No, but, I mean, it's unemployment, there's only eight thousand dollars in there, is what I'm saying, so, which will go like that.
But Vicki, it should go the other direction, because we added, the budget, the approved budget we're working in was less. We added a bunch of money to it, so that probably is going to be a less of a layoff.
Right.
But still, the eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, it will be less than a, less, less of a layoff.
When we started, they were going to lay off, let's say, a couple people, two and a half, and maybe one and a half, so we're better, we're on the better side of that.
I'm not saying we have what we have to think about, and what does that do to the unemployment line?
Yeah.
And maybe one of those teachers could be going over to the language base, I don't know if the qualifications.
Yeah, I'm just saying that if we lay people off, or cut people in the town in general, we will have to increase that.
Erin's got to go back to the folks and try to figure it out.
Just making you think about it, because that means.
Margaret Larson, how are you?
I'm sorry. This just, I just want to, just in case anyone is still listening out there, I'm going to go back to that discussion that you had about that parents could still choose to send their kids elsewhere if we did have this language-based program.
We've got a motion in a second here, so.
But this is to kind of, to just, this is on the topic still, to make sure that the language program is being supported.
Not sure we can do this, Ed, can we, or do we need to take a vote? I thought we need to take a vote.
I think it's part of discussion, no?
It's entirely up to you, you don't, you don't have to take any public input at all.
Well, that's not my intent, so, if it's not going against anything, we're going to come back, go ahead.
You know, it's related to the language-based program. Um, so, the, the concern was that parents might still be able to choose to send their kids elsewhere, even if Norris implements this program. So, according to the law, if Norris offers a comparable program, then those students are required to stay at Norris. Because the law requires the least restrictive environment for special ed kids, and an out-of-district placement is considered most restrictive.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
What if a child is already going outside when the program is established? Now they have the program, are they required?
I can actually find that out if you would like to.
I mean, I would love to find that out, but I would also say, just from a human nature standpoint, I would imagine that the path of least resistance for that family would also be to probably entertain, trying to come back as well.
Capturing those kids back is huge, I think.
But this isn't going to change the vote, because they could still have the language-based program and save the money somewhere else in this, in Norris School. So, we've got the motion in a second, so.
I can answer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it's unanimous. Okay, Margaret, if you want to give us the answer?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, the answer to that is that if that, if they are already out of district, then they can do an arrangement where you're paying like half and half of transportation, or things like that. So, they could continue to stay out of district, but there, there are usually some accommodations that have to be made for the local budget, since they are providing that program.
There is some capture there.
Correct.
But I think also the point is, if, if your child is going to Westfield, and now you have the program in here, you want to keep your child in the same district, same school, same children, so, hopefully draw people back. Okay, so that's, we, we have a balanced budget, and it's only ten o'clock.
I'm just going to make this adjustment here for you.
Great, putting the lights on, please, on the key.
So, then this, this line item goes back to four million, six, thirty-six, eight, four, zero, point two eight.
Just to check it, go down, see if it's balanced out a little.
Of course.
Hopefully it is. There we go. Save it, Matt, you've done a great job here, thanks. Appreciate it.
We haven't even touched the agenda yet.
Can you give me some power?
Okay. Okay, uh, old business, we're just going to run over. New business, Colas, I think we've kind of talked about that, we left it as it was. Twenty budget review, we've done that. Placement of the Graenstein donated to the town. What, what here, Ed, are you folks, that we can just put to the next time? Placement of the Graenstein, we don't need to talk about that, right?
Yeah, we can pass, we'll do that next meeting.
Board of Assessors letter recommending the town exercises right of first refusal, we received that. Right of first refusal, lot two E, Pomeroy Meadow. What do you want us to do on that, Ed, in open session?
It's, it's on here, we still have to have the public hearing, which will be May second, so, at that public hearing, the board should, should either vote, or vote in favor of, or in opposition of waiving its right of first refusal.
But we're going to do that at the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so that's May second. Uh, request to sign letter in support of legislation for additional community preservation state-matching funds.
So, that's in your packets, or should be in your packets, and it's also in that original.
Do we need a motion for that, Ed?
Should.
Yeah, we do.
I'll make a motion, and that the select board sign a letter in support of legislation for additional community preservation state-matching funds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, hold on, we'll sign this quickly.
Thank you.
Okay. Review internal applicants for permanent police chief position? I believe we only received one.
That is correct.
It's in the package.
And it was the best person in the world that submitted, as far as I'm concerned.
I don't think we should have our bias out in public there, Ed. Oh, the, it seems like the applicant is Ian Illingsworth, the acting police chief. Uh, everybody has a copy of his resume. If people remember, last time we were looking for a police chief, it came down very closely to two people. Chief Illingsworth was one of them. Came highly recommended then, and everything I've heard since then is staying with that. And we're going to go into executive session and discuss this, Ed, correctly?
Well, if you, if the board decides that they would like to appoint Ian Illingsworth as the permanent police chief in open session, then the next step would be to, to go into executive session later on and talk about negotiating a contract.
Okay, so.
Make a motion?
I'll make, yeah. Go ahead, Reenie.
Hold on, guys, hold on, this is, this is my honor here, let's, you know.
Because I changed it manually.
So, from what I've heard, it's, it's been a lot of praise for the chief, so, if somebody wants to make a motion that we offer the position to interim Chief Illingsworth, please bring the motion up.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this motion is pending successful negotiation of a contract. Hope the wait was worthwhile, chief? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We're going to have to go into executive session?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Can you take that ticket off my car for parking illegally?
I don't know if you want to stick around, or you want to, okay. Try to do this quick.
And while we just did that, I just want to double-check with Vicki, because my understanding is, for this fiscal year, we would be locked into what's already appropriated for a salary for that, and we would have to appropriate at the town meeting for the next fiscal year's salary, correct?
Um, well, no, if you negotiate his contract, and it's starting tomorrow, or next week, you can go, I mean, we can transfer money into that line item.
For this year.
For this year, from other line items, so, it's not.
Thank you.
But once it's signed, and it's appropriated at town meeting, you can't change that line item with any contracts for the next, the term of those contracts, anyone that has a contract, so.
Okay, Board of Selectmen's annual report, I believe, were you going to send something around, Ed, so we can all take a look at it, a draft?
Uh, I had sent last year's report to Reenie.
Okay.
It was, I thought had volunteered at the last meeting that she was going to work on it. No?
He thinks I've.
You're in the ladies' room.
It might be, might be my mind playing tricks on me.
So, Reenie, apparently you have it, if you want to take a crack at it, or if you want to send it around to the rest of us to help out?
I'd be happy to take a crack at it.
Or I can take a crack at it, too, and send it around.
Okay, thank you. Any other necessary business that can't wait to April twenty-second regular select board meeting? Which, by the way, people remember, this is on a Monday now. Is there anything that can't wait? Okay, uh, PCFs, do we have the PCFs from the FinCom?
Yes, they did bring them down.
Okay.
Can I just mention something while we're doing this? You know, we do have our memorial parade coming up really soon. I just got a text not too long ago from one of the people that's helped in the past. So, if anybody out there has any interest in helping with the Memorial Day Parade, please let me know, okay?
We're the last one in line.
Okay, this is going to be weird, but this is a personnel request from the post-the-police-chief job. Apparently, we're doing catch-up on the signatures, signed by the PQB and the Finance Committee.
Oh, it's Reenie's computer.
So, we need a motion to post this.
Well, it's already been posted.
Yeah, I know, it's been posted, and we've hired somebody, so.
Well, it's, yeah, this is the technical end of the signature, the board, board had authorized posting it a couple weeks ago.
I'll make a motion that we posted two weeks ago.
Wait a minute, if the board authorized, wait a minute, if, if the board authorized it two weeks ago, then that should be when we authorized it, we just need a signature on it today.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying, so.
So.
Doesn't make sense.
Doesn't make sense. So, if everybody's okay, I'll sign it as the chair, based on what we voted two weeks ago. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Good. The night gets longer, it gets stranger, huh? Could you pass that down, please? Okay, we have another one, which is a PCF. Job title is website developer for historical resources of Southampton website. This is for Carol Goulet, Crooked Ledge Road, Southampton. Community preservation awarded the library six thousand dollars to pay someone to work on the historical resources of Southampton website, to add new material. Carol Goulet has been working on this website where she was employed. This person, is this your writing, Ed, or?
No.
Scroll to Carol's.
Okay, so it looks like.
So, for three thousand dollars.
CPA money has been approved for this person, twenty hours, for three hours a week, for fifty-two weeks, three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. So, have a motion to accept?
Also moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass that down, please. Licenses, permits, none warrants, Francine, you've signed this?
Yeah, warrant W nineteen dash forty-one for sixty-three thousand, two-hundred-seventy-one dollars and nine cents.
Okay, no signature required, or no approval required. Minutes to approve, November thirteenth, twenty-seventeen. Should be page one eighty-seven. Everybody get a chance to look at those?
Mm-hmm.
So, do we have a motion to approve as written?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November seventeen.
Second?
Nineteen, two thousand and what?
Seventeen.
November thirteen, two thousand and seventeen.
Right.
It's all long.
These are ones that Ed's trying to catch up on when Bob was here, I believe.
Yeah.
So we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
The only thing is Aetna was spelled wrong consistently.
What is spelled wrong?
Aetna. Ed's previous employer. This was the, this was the meeting that we actually interviewed the TA candidates, and Aetna is A-E-T-N-A.
Okay, so with that correction, then, change...
I can have that amended.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? You abstain?
I abstain, I don't, I didn't.
Okay, so we've got 3, 0, and 2. Is that right?
Yep.
Pending items, we're gonna just pass all that over, right? We've talked about a lot of this. Calendar events, April 6th.
Excuse me, one second. Ed, is there anything we need to do about that open space? You had sent us a document about that.
Yeah, it was, it was actually under old business of the open space recreation plan that had the scope of services in it and vote for the affirmation of the community commitment.
Do we have to sign off on it?
Yes, we should.
What do you need? A motion?
Yeah, we have an affirmation of community commitment.
We have to agree to in-kind whatever, right?
Right, five, up to 5%.
Okay, and they're giving, and the grant is for like 10.7 or something?
10.5.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the PVPC proposal to do the open space and recreation plan and the community commitment that goes along with it. Is that good enough?
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we approved the minutes of November, so I think Francine, who signed this?
I request that at the May 7th select board meeting that we not have any PCFs or PRFs on the agenda.
Well, it depends, because some of them may be important to get...
Yeah, but last time it was ridiculous.
Well...
I mean, we couldn't get to the meeting either, and there was a whole stack of them.
I know, but we've gotta go through them, the personnel change forms.
I know, but they weren't urgent.
Well, let's put them on the agenda if we wanna bypass them.
When it last time, we all agreed that it was over the top.
We could bypass them if we want to at that point, but if they're on there, we have time. Okay. Selectment meetings, April 16th, May 2nd, May 7th, prior to annual town meeting. Articles for the town meeting are on there, we're not gonna read those.
Well, you may want to, because actually, some of these will play, you're gonna have to authorize whether you want them to go on or not.
We can't do that at our next meeting?
I have to have this written and ready for signing for the next meeting. And then I will also remind you that while most of them are in here, the actual recommendations from the Capitol Committee should be acted on by the Board of Selectmen.
So you want us to go through these in, thumbs up or thumbs down, Ed?
Sure, please.
Okay, everybody have them in front of them?
Yep.
Okay, educational awards. I tell you what, if there's no issues, I'm just gonna keep reading, okay?
Okay.
Educational awards, presentations of certificates, which are state certificates, citizen petition to reduce community preservation surcharge percentage to 1%. Bylaw amendment to change Board of Selectmen to select board or select board, two words or one word. Bylaw amendment, amendment to last year's bylaw change. I'm not sure what that means. Yeah, I'm not sure what that means. Bylaw amendment, amendment to last year's bylaw change.
And you can scratch that one off, because I have not been able to find what really needs to get amended again.
Okay. Bylaw amendment to Article 1 Town Meeting, add a new Section 10 on matters requiring a two-thirds vote by statute. Account need not be taken unless a vote so declared by the moderator is questioned by seven or more voters as provided in Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 15.
And I had drafted this after the last special town meeting, and I did send a copy of it to our moderator, Robert Floyd, and our moderator is not in favor of this, so the board may not want to move forward with it.
I spoke with Maury Healy, Robert Floyd, 15 East Street. I spoke with Maury Healy directly, the Attorney General herself. She called me back, and she explained the law to me, and it's legal. And I would step down as moderator to give my opinion, which I would have to anyway, because it's a town moderate. It's obvious that there's only two people saying nay. However, we only do this two or three times a year, and for the future, it can be abused as it historically has been when it's close. And yes, it only takes seven people, but in the scheme of things, it's a small safety measure, and I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, so with that in mind, if we can take it off or leave it on, so what are your, what are your thoughts up here at the board?
Who put it on?
Yeah, I would agree with her.
Do we know who put it on?
Is it by partition?
No, I had drafted it after some of our conversations after the last meeting. I didn't know if you wanted to move forward with it or not, so...
Let me make a motion, we strike it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Yeah, those were...
Okay, authorization for select board to sign 10-year recycling contract?
And the contract for the MRF is, it's being negotiated now. It's, I think, due to be finalized September or October, but it would be another 10-year contract, so we would need authorization for...
Anything over three years, right?
For the board to sign that once it is finalized.
Okay.
Is this something that went out to bid? The recycling contract?
It's basically for how we recycle. Currently, that's with the MRF, so...
Okay, no.
Yeah.
Okay, not the hauler.
It's nothing we do directly.
Okay.
Change PPPB board to appointed members. Hampshire Regional School District, five-year contract with a three-year base with the option to renew additional years for bus transportation. And there again, that's because it's five years, Ed?
Yes.
Okay. Join Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control Program. This would also need a $5,000 appropriation to go along with it. So that means that we'd have to find $5,000 in the budget somewhere to do this.
Correct.
Yeah, it wasn't in this budget, we just...
No, it was not.
No, it was not.
Was there a proposal?
From...
From the Board of Health for funding?
Yeah, the request was there.
But there was no, no proposal where the funding was coming from.
No, we would have to identify the funding.
At what point would that have to happen?
After the budget gets approved, then this gets approved. We gotta go back and cut the budget somewhere.
Okay.
$5,000.
This is presented to the town with a...
And I would...
Well, if you, if you were going to present it to the town, I would probably identify a funding source to go along with it, because if we join, we've made the commitment, and it's gonna cost $5,000.
Do you know if it's any expense?
I think we should put this off around here.
My question, we didn't participate last year, did we?
I know, yeah.
No.
Okay.
What is the, that's, $5,000's not treatment for it, is it just...
No, it's like surveillance. Charlie did a presentation not too long ago about it.
It's like surveying and mapping where they are.
Being part of a coalition. It wouldn't be a bad idea to get more information. Again, it was a while ago, it was obviously a year ago when it was taken out, when the budget was slashed because of the proposition to an house.
So why don't we leave it on, get more information? Because we can always take it off.
Always pass over.
Yeah. So, Ed, can you maybe get Charlie back or get more information?
Yeah, and where would you like to earmark funding for it from?
Yeah, that's the problem. Board of Health?
Hmm?
Board of Health.
Yeah, yeah.
Good idea.
Well...
Free cash, operational stabilization.
I think I need to hear more about it.
Yeah, I know.
I'm not ready to denote a funding source for this yet.
So let's, let's get more information.
Because if it's an annual thing to be part of this, it would be important.
I wanna know what it pays for, and if it's just a, I mean, yeah.
Okay, so adjust eligibility factors for the seniors. Wait a minute, this isn't worded right. Adjust eligibility factors for the seniors, adjust from income level, I think there's a comment here. Adjust from income level to $20,000 for single and to $25,000 for married. So this is for...
Get the second adjust out of there, I don't think that makes sense.
So this is a COA proposal, and it basically...
Board of Assessors.
Oh, Board of Assessors, right, right, right. It was discussed at Council of Aging. So basically, they're trying to make it easier for some seniors who are basically at poverty level to get a tax exemption on their taxes.
It's a tax break, right?
Yeah, so they're lowering, lowering the limits and lowering the age.
Yeah.
The next one is the age, then.
Yeah. Okay. Adjust eligibility factors for property tax exemption for senior citizens by reducing the minimum age requirement from 70 to 65. Okay. Fiscal year 2020 operating budget? How are these presented? Fiscal 2020 capital budget? Highway borrow $250,000 as a debt exclusion to fund the replacement of a large highway dump truck. Norris School Fire Alarm, $28,498 from capital stabilization. Norris School Sidewalk Replacement/Repair, $26,000 from capital stabilization. Norris School Borrow as a debt exclusion grouped together as one project for building improvements. A, sinks $9,000. B, carpeting, $28,500. C, door replaced and repaired, $48,500. D, gutter repair and caulking, $10,500. Masonary work, $1,300. Total debt exclusion, $97,800. Police Department Desktop Computers Times 5, $6,825 from free cash. Police Department Windows 10 and Office Licenses, $8,200 from free cash. Police Department Dispatch Council, $92,112 from capital stabilization. Police Department Borrow for Vehicle Cruiser, $46,672 as a non-debt exclusion. Fire Department Boiler Replacement, $72,500 from capital stabilization.
What is a non-debt exclusion?
And, and...
Because that's already done.
Yeah, this, this one's already been done. Go ahead, Vicki.
So my, my thought was the $72.50, we've already paid for that.
How do we pay for it?
Because we already...
I'm back at it.
It only happened...
Oh, out of what fund? Out of his expenses?
Building expenses.
Building expenses. So I think there's enough money in other line items where we could make that up in this year's budget instead of taking it out of account.
But we don't need it.
I don't think that...
Cross it off.
I would cross it off.
Need a motion on that?
I move that we delete the boiler replacement for the fire department at $72.50.
Second?
Third.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just ask one question? Remind me again, it's probably just because it's late, non-debt exclusion? What does that mean?
Just borrowing.
It's just regular borrowing.
Okay.
I just wanted to make it clear.
Knocking on.
Yeah.
Your taxes in terms of tax rate, but it'll go on in terms of budget appropriation.
Okay, Fire Department, fire turnout gear, $12,000 from capital stabilization. Fire Department Borrowing for Fire Department Admin Vehicle as a non-debt exclusion. Library Roof Replacement, $20,000 of capital stabilization, and $24,000 from operational stabilization. Town Hall PCs and Software, seven PCs, $8,029. Building Department, ten drawers, steel filing cabinet, okay, here we go, $3,536. Are we gonna leave that in, or are we gonna take that out?
We talked about the scanner.
Scanner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
So if you wanna take it out, we need a motion to take it out.
I thought we talked about doing both.
Ed was gonna check with Tom.
Yeah, I think Vicki thought we might be able to find funds to transfer and take care of this.
From the operating budget?
Yes.
So we need a motion to take this out, too?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Town Hall Ballot Machine, take no action but hold and reserve in free cash. Can we just hold money in free cash, Vicki, like that? I didn't think so.
But we have it in free cash.
Well, we have it, but the free cash is gonna roll.
It will go away as of June 30th. Now, I talked to Lucy about this, and there is gonna be money left in her election expense line item.
Okay.
That could potentially, and she didn't have an assistant in her assistant line item after she left. So those two combined together, when we do transfers at the end of the year, if she needs this, can cover that.
And just remember, it's gonna be twice as much, you said, right? Like 12 grand is gonna be at this price?
Well, that's, well, she had got this quote and another one she probably should get, I don't know.
There's only, there's only two...
Oh, there's only two companies that do it?
That do it, exactly.
Also check on a rebuild, I would think.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to take this off.
I move to eliminate the town clerk, the ballot machine.
Well, that's why I think we're trying to take this off, really.
Okay.
Second?
I didn't hear the motion.
To remove this act item, the $6,500.
Okay, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Unanimous. Total capital funding out of capital stabilization. Looks like you're saying that total's about $185,860 with a balance of $695.20.
Which obviously gets adjusted from up above, or we remove the $72.50.
We also have to add the stormwater, $35,000.
Yes, we do.
Well, that's operational stabilization.
Add Warren Article 4, yes.
Yep.
Do we need to approve that Warren Article right now?
Please.
I'll make a motion that we ask for the MS4 Stormwater Fund of $35,000 from operational stabilization.
Okay, so you wanna add that as an article to the warrant?
Yep.
Second.
Okay, second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. So these numbers, I don't have to read them because they're gonna be adjusted based on the changes we made.
Right.
Okay, so revolving funds, renewal spending funds, revolving funds at Conservation Commission for Forestry.
If we go back to the capital on the free cash, the $33.90, it does include the $6,500 for the ballot if we were taking that off?
Well, that's what I'm saying, she's gotta adjust all these things.
All right, all of that.
Because of all the changes we made. So revolving fund at Conservation Commission for Forestry undertaken on town conservation land. Do we have to put in an amount here, Ed? For a new, for a new fund?
$10,000.
What is it?
$10,000.
$10,000, so we'll add $10,000 as a number to this. Revolving funds, add Fire Department for Forestry Equipment from Burning Permits. And again, what are we looking at for an amount, Ed?
I think we have the $5,000.
$5,000? So this will be the money from the burning permits will go into the revolving fund and just...
And they'll use it to buy equipment for fighting first fires.
Okay.
Transfer permits and then capitalize on it.
Transfer for amortization of WPAT bonds, which is for the septic systems. Transfer for ambulance-related expenses and wages, $100,000. Transfer from where? Transfer from where?
It should be ambulance receipts reserved.
For, yeah.
One more time?
Ambulance fund.
Ambulance receipts reserved for negoti, uh, reserved for appropriation.
Transfer to ambulance stabilization, $10,000. Transfer Station Enterprise Fund Fiscal Year 2020 Budget. Water Enterprise Fiscal Year 2020 Budget. Report of the Community Preservation Committee. Funding, Community Preservation Committee Acquisition of 68 Palmeroy Meadow Road. Funding for Prior Year Bill for Cook Road Acquisitions of $2,762.50. Community Preservation Surcharges, Open Space Account.
So that was a back bill, right? That was.
Prior fiscal year's bill.
Yeah, I, when Winding River, Vicki Morrow Palmeroy Meadow Road, when Winding River, um, closed and, and merged with Franklin Trust, their accountant sent me a bill and said, "Did you guys ever pay this?"
Yeah.
So I talked to Virginia, I called East Hampton, 'cause East Hampton paid their half, and that was our half, so we.
Yeah.
Gotta pay that, so.
Okay, open.
The last one.
Yeah.
This one?
I was actually wondering if the chief might be able to explain that, just because.
Oh, I see it, okay. Article to fund the extra costs of having two police officers in the academy during fiscal year 2020, $35,420.5 from operational stabilization. Now, Chief, that's a one-time deal, hopefully, correct?
Uh, yes, so I actually. So what happens is, um.
You gotta tell yourself.
I'm sorry, Ian Ellingsworth? Police Chief.
Police Chief, yeah.
We are in the, we're, we're down three officers now, as a result of John Arici leaving, Jeremy La Rochelle going to the Highway Department, and filling Mike, uh, Chief Mike Guoiet's position. So when we put somebody through the academy, if we were to replace that person's position while they're in the academy with part-time officers, it's a 22-week academy, so that's about $16,000 to have that position filled while they're in the academy with part-time officers. On top of that expense is a $3,000 academy tuition, and then there's about $1,300 in expenses of equipment that they're required to have for the academy. And the medical test, testing is about $270, as well as, um, the physical assessment test is another $150. So it becomes an expense. So, right currently, we have an officer entering the academy on June 10th. So he'll have 20 weeks in the next fiscal year to, to have part-time officers have to fill his position. So that's about $14,000, and then should we replace another officer that fiscal year, that would be another, uh, 16, $16,000 in, in expenses, wages, while for the part-time officers, plus another $3,000 for the academy expenses, so it'll be around another $21,000 or so.
So I know a couple of questions that come up, is, is one is, can we hire police officers that we don't have to send to the academy, honestly?
We can, we actually, we tried that the last round. Um, we, I asked the union if they would allow accelerated benefits to kind of give an incentive not to come in as a entry-level officer. The union agreed to it, and then we did not get one applicant.
Any, any idea why?
Um.
Pay?
Pay.
Pay.
Pay. And, you know, it's a particular officer that, you know, would wanna work for South Hampton, oftentimes that, you know, when you become an officer, you endeavor to work probably in larger communities, uh, maybe even the community that you grew up in, and pay, pay's al, always an incentive. So, um, I, I attribute a lot of that.
So the other question is, can we do some sort of contract with these folks, saying that since we paid for this, you gotta stay X amount of time?
I did. I did it with our, our most recent recruit.
Okay.
Um, and how that works is, um, he's committed to work for us for five years, and the reason why it's five years is usually after five years, people are situated in the community, they have benefits, they start acquiring, um, vacation, and it's harder for them to leave. Um, and so how it works is, every year that they, they're with us, they have to pay, if they decide to leave while in the academy, it's the complete cost. If they decide, if they're one year afterwards, they have to pay, um, up to 80%. Two years, 60%, 20% each year, and that's, that's how we graduated it.
So, sounds good.
At what point are they able to go into the academy after starting a position here, right away?
It all depends on when the academy's available. So we have two regional academies that they, well, maybe three. Springfield, the city of Springfield has its own academy, typically Hoy Oak, Chickapi, larger municipalities will go to that academy. Then we have the regional academy in, that, that stick. And that, sometimes maybe you, you might get two a year. And then they have the state police holds a municipal academy as well. So we've sent people to the state police municipal academy, as well as the regional academy.
Where is that?
And it all depends on, that is at a new Brookfield.
How does, I don't.
From East Brookfield, sorry.
Ed, maybe, maybe you know the answer to this, I have a question just regard to this, 'cause I, I know that the Fire Department has to send all of their people to Fire Academy, plus all of the equipment, so I'm just kinda wondering how the costs compare between the two? Do you, does, can anybody articulate that?
They don't have to pay.
Yeah.
If they don't pay, you go to the Fire Academy.
They don't? All right.
Firemen don't carry guns.
That's what I was asking.
Well, it was one of the things that was arranged many years ago, that actually the Fire Academy is paid through, uh, some of the insurance funds.
Okay.
And, and while we don't know when it will begin, supposedly sometime in the future, not the pay to a view officer actually in the academy, or to cover for them, sometime in the future, um, the actual academy cost of $3,000 is supposed to be picked up by the state through, um, a surcharge on.
Rental vehicles.
On rental, rental vehicles.
Yes. It just hasn't affected us yet.
Any more questions for the chief? Okay, now, I think.
Can I just, like, can I just ask a question on, on all the dollar amounts that are cited in these various articles, are we going to put a caveat in that they are sub, not to exceed the amount?
Okay, so not to exceed.
Not to exceed the amount that's specified.
Well, I've been taught that that is not the way to word an article. You can't exceed that amount anyway.
Can't exceed it anyway.
Anyway.
All right.
Yeah.
Just make it clear, I mean, okay.